All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the official school committee of the town of Foxborough regular meeting. Today is August 28th, 2017. We're getting ready for school reopening. Tonight's agenda, we're going to start with a very special visitor who's with us, who comes by every few years, Mr. Glenn Kuchar, who's the executive director of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. We will then do our usual approval of minutes. We're then going to get our annual update on summer work and preparation for the opening of school. It's always amazing how much Bill and Tony and Aaron and everybody else accomplishes, so I know that'll be an exciting update. We will vote on our 2017-2018 school district goals, which we've been working on. And then we're going to have the first reading of several policies. One on the use of electronic messaging by school committee members, one on naming new facilities, one on naming existing facilities, and one on domestic violence leave policy. We then are fortunate enough to have a couple of donations to accept, one from the Foxborough Diamond Club and one from the Jerry Roy Scholarship Fund. We have the By County Collaborative Quarterly Update this evening, and then the school committee appointment to the Project Contemporary Competitiveness Board of Directors for the 17-18 school year, and then we'll take up other matters. Let me just note for the record that unfortunately, two of our members aren't able to be with us tonight, Ms. Lord and Mrs. Weiss. Due to personal circumstances, we wish them both well and speedy travel and return to our meetings. And also, maybe it's okay just to say a word or two before we get to other matters about a special day that occurred yesterday. Do you want to just talk about that for a minute, Tina?
I was planning to talk about it under other matters, but I would be delighted to talk about it now. I brought the program because it was really well done, in case anyone wanted to see it. I was honored to speak at the dedication of the Ahern Athletic Field in honor of Coach Martinelli, our new Jack Martinelli field. And it was really a great day. There was a long list of speakers, and they were all very moving and spoke so eloquently about Coach Martinelli and his impact on their lives and the lives of the students in the town of Foxborough, both on and off the field and in the gym. It was really a great day. It was beautiful weather, it was very well attended, all of our current players and cheerleaders were there, and it was really just a great day. We should say that the Foxborough Football Alumni Association, led by Mark Elfman, Stephanie and Jim McGowan, and Tom Ryan, did a great job of pulling together this wonderful event.
And if you want to say more about it later, if you think of other things, feel free. I just thought that having occurred just yesterday, we should just open with congratulations again to Coach Martinelli.
Absolutely, congratulations. And his whole family was there, all three of his children, their spouses, all of his grandchildren, and of course, Mrs. Martinelli was there. It was just a wonderful, it really was a wonderful celebration and a great day, and yes, definitely, congratulations to Coach Martinelli.
And thank you for representing us.
Thank you for letting me. It was a great day, I was happy to speak. It was enjoyable listening to the speeches, too.
Yeah, I'm sure.
It really was.
Congratulations, Coach.
Yes.
Okay, before we introduce Glenn, any other visitors? I don't see a big audience tonight. I think people are enjoying summer.
The last.
So let me skip right to Glenn and invite Glenn to the table, to the visitors' table. I want to offer a thanks to Tina for suggesting that we invite Glenn back, and also, a special thanks to Glenn for coming down from Cambridge, fighting the traffic on 128, which I'm sure was delightful. For those who don't know, Glenn Kuchar's been a friend of all of the school systems here in Massachusetts for a number of years, serving as the executive director, as I mentioned, of the, of MASC, M-A-S-C, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. He has been around this particular committee in this school district several times when we've looked to him for counsel and advice, and he does a great job supporting school committees across the state. So Glenn, it's nice to see you again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for coming.
May I assume that the members who are not here will have access to video of this and that they'll see it when they come back?
They absolutely will.
Because I did a while ago mention to Beverly Lord, she and I share a passion for musical theater, and I had mentioned that I was going to New York last weekend to see Warpaint, and I would give her a review. So Beverly...
I'm sure she'll appreciate that.
Spend your money elsewhere. I'm sorry.
I'm sure she'll get a chuckle out of that.
I'm sure she'll get that.
Glenn, maybe, as we had discussed briefly in setting up your visit tonight, maybe you could start with just a few comments top of your head on what's new in public education in Massachusetts, things you're seeing. Not a comprehensive report, of course, but then, we have some things going on here that I think if you'd comment on your perspective, we are going to be turning over our superintendency. As you know, sorry to see Mrs. Spinelli leave us, but delighted that Dr. Berdows is here in house, and just for the benefit of our committee and the public, maybe you can just make a few comments on that procedure.
Sure. First of all, the state will be going through the development of a new assessment system for rating school districts that will be derived from instructions from the federal government, which is now fighting within itself about who at the federal level will drive the actual educational agenda. The state will be looking at new measures and new rating systems for districts. We don't quite know what's going to happen. I would say, for Foxborough, there's little to worry about. This is a district that's doing well. This is a district that has harmony in the community, at least as it seems from everything that we're able to deduce. So, other than the fact that the Department of Education will continue to be looking over everybody's shoulders and increasing the level of regulation, on that regulatory side, things might change somewhat, but will not change significantly. On the budget side, we are a bit concerned that, for the first time, following an economic period, a period of economic growth, we have not seen the state revenue matching that level of growth. We had hoped that we would see that. Usually, when the economy goes like this, the investment market trails, and then when the economy drops, it takes about nine months, and then state revenue drops. So now that it's back up, we're hoping to see this, and we're not really seeing it. So that's of some concern. However, the economy in Massachusetts is strong, we're doing better than pretty much everyone else in that regard. The ability of the state to continue to keep everybody at foundation budget level is not in question. The ability of the state to provide you with additional revenue from Chapter 70 beyond the bare minimum is in question. And even those districts which are economically advantaged, they're still going to depend on significant amounts of state aid to meet all the different mandates, to fulfill all the obligations that you have with curriculum, instruction, testing, buildings, infrastructure, and things like that. But you're in a good place, and this is, if I lived in Foxborough, I'd be very optimistic about the future of the public schools. Now, in terms of the ability of the federal government to provide us with funding, from the Department of Agriculture's Food Subsidy Program to the Title I program under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, by whatever name it has, the vocational schools will depend on the Perkins Act, and that money could be in jeopardy, depending upon what happens with the federal budget. And I can tell you, I recall no other time, not only in my own lifetime, but in the history that I have read, that we have seen a federal situation as volatile as the one that we have. So, for as regard to what's going to happen, I rely on the advice of my daughter, who said, "Dad, you can't fast-forward a live broadcast." So, if we knew, we'd know, but my sense is that even the people in the know don't know. So we do the best we can and continue. Those are the major issues. I mean, people are worried about special education funding, federal funding, state funding. There are some districts that are worried about the wolves at the door with their status as a district and the number of underperforming students and cohorts, but that's not Foxborough. So, that would take me to your other issue that you had wanted me to talk about. Last year, the number of vacancies slowed down a bit, but we're still seeing 45 to four dozen superintencies rolling over. It's largely a function of retirement. Very few superintendents are involuntarily bereft of their contracts. That said, there is a real paucity of good candidates for the superintendency, for a number of reasons. First of all, in no particular order, but the first, the obvious one, a lot of people don't want to do this work because it's very, very difficult. There is, every superintendent and every principal needs to complete a very, very healthy but detailed evaluation process. There's making the finances work, there's dealing with all the different accountability and assessment systems that you need to have, there's the hiring that needs to get done. People are very, very busy with this, and it's, you know, I served on a school committee from 1974 to 1986. We barely talked about student achievement because no one was holding us accountable. Now everybody's holding you accountable, and you have, it's like being a Major League manager, one bad season and pffft. So, everybody's really worried about that. A lot of people don't want to come to Massachusetts because Massachusetts has the nation's most rancid regulatory climate for schools. Nobody else has the volume of regulation, the complexity of the accountability and assessment system, the drive to create the greatest possible appearance of underperformance than you see in Massachusetts. And some of our top districts still drop a level, or can't get to Level 1, or whatever they happen to be, on a technicality. It's difficult to explain, it's impossible to defend, so I won't do that, but if you live in New York, why would you come to Massachusetts and fail on paper, which is a problem? So the job is hard. Number two, many of our districts have begun internal leadership cultivation. So, many of the best candidates are staying put because they can grow within their own departments. So we don't see them as candidates. They don't enter the pool. And the ones that do would enter the pool because they have no expectation of growth in their own district. So as a result, again, fewer people want to come forward, and the people who do want to come forward are not always sitting superintendents. In times of sort of economic uncertainty, people don't take risks. So a superintendent is not going to leave a district where she or he is successful in order to go someplace else unless there's a significant challenge or economic reason for doing that. And what we found is, more and more, districts have been listening to what we have been urging, and that is, develop a leadership cultivation program within your own district. Do it not only for the superintendents, but do it for the central office and do it for the principals, so you can grow your own. About a third of our districts, when confronting a vacancy, will just go ahead and make an internal promotion. A third of them will do a search, a formal search, a broad search, and get some technical assistance, often from us, because we don't charge for it, and we can do extensive technical assistance. And then a third, go out and get a consultant, sometimes us, sometimes somebody else, and pay them sometimes huge amounts of money to find them candidates who are going to find them anyway. People looking for the superintendency find out about it by going to the websites of MASs and MASC, and those are free. So, many districts have just decided, we're going to go this by, do this by ourselves, or we've cultivated a leadership cohort and we're going to make a promotion. My experience is that in the absence of financial chaos, administrative chaos, significant irregularities that question the integrity of the district, in the absence of those problems, people accept the leadership of the school committee, and they follow the guidance of the school committee, provided the decisions are made in public and the public is aware of what's happening. Frankly, it's the easiest way to proceed, because you don't waste time and you don't waste money doing a huge process, which ends up, if you have good leadership internally, right where you started, and everybody ends up happy, except you've taken time and you've lost the expense of doing that. And several districts have done that. Few years ago, we had three or four, right on the North Shore, Swamp Scott, Marblehead, couple of others, they just, they just did it, promoted internally, moved someone forward, gave the public an opportunity to observe, weigh in, and there was no trouble because there were no crises, there were no reasons to question the integrity of the district. And when that happens, you're very fortunate. So many districts, as I say, do that subject to the negotiation of a mutually agreeable contract of employment. And if you're looking, you know, what we really urge districts to do is, if you're about to push the button on a superintendency, talk to us about model contracts, look at some of the things that you want to think about in the contracting process. Ideally, you don't want to be doing this again in three years. There are, this is another risk that comes with people who are looking to make a change but don't necessarily have a commitment to the district they're leaving or the district they're going to. So they're there for three years, and then they start looking to go elsewhere than they might be. Some things that you do want to be concerned about, certainly, performance completion. In other words, we're giving you an X-year contract, we expect you to be here for X years. Predictability in renewal or extensions, comparative economic equity. We do recommend that you define the evaluation process in the contract and put that on a schedule so it works. One thing I do want to mention, which is going to be very helpful, in the superintendent evaluation process, you will be, and I guess you've been doing this, you rate the superintendent at the end of the year. You were to have given the superintendent and all of your educators an additional rating on the impact that they have on student achievement. Now, we just couldn't figure out how to do it, so the department actually gave up on that mandate. So you will not be, it's going to make the evaluation process easier, and I don't think it's coming back. In other words, it's, it's very easy to say, okay, every kid in your math class does better than every kid in your math class, but it's not always easy to say why. Sometimes it's because I'm the principal and I give you the easiest kids, sometimes it's because maybe you're better at the pedagogy, sometimes maybe you just had a bad luck of the draw in terms of students that were coming. And in order to actually determine impact, you've got to take a lot of time and get a lot of data and deal with a lot of variables, and that's just an exercise that we ultimately figured out was going to be more disciplinary than helpful. So they gave up. I would guess that to determine the impact that a teacher has on kids would be a multi-year process, and it would involve a lot of different factors, and some of it would come from here and from here, as opposed to from here. So, when you do your superintendent's evaluation, you want to make sure you have a good document, you want to make sure that the school committee gets to determine what that document might be, and you certainly want to make sure that you have the upper hand in terms of, you know, controlling the future of the contract. So the Superintendent's Association will have a contract that looks very different from ours.
I suspect.
And I would advise, I would, you know, rely on your legal counsel to help you with that as well. But I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have as you move forward.
Well, I appreciate Glenn, your comments. Thank you for coming and sharing some perspective. With your counsel, as you know, we've gone ahead and announced that we are going to have the good fortune to hire Dr. Berdows pending a successful contract negotiation, which we're going to let her get through the start of school, and then we'll work with her on that. And I think you commented, a third of the districts you see are promoting within.
Will make an internal promotion and just do it. And the public either is happy with it, because they have no reason not to be, or, more often than not, the public is saying, "Why are you spending money to fill a vacancy when you have a superintendent, you have an assistant superintendent, the logical sequence was that this is what would happen?" And I would recommend that, you know, once the next superintendency begins, you should start thinking about the same leadership cultivation that you have, because this is the second time that you've made an internal promotion with, without, as far as I can see, minimal concern, if any concern, from within the community.
Yeah, we've received a lot of support for our plan forward, and you're right, we were very fortunate to be able to promote Mrs. Spinelli to the role and now Dr. Berdows.
That's a function of a lot of things. It's a function of proficiency within the district, leadership cultivation within the district, and the respect that the school, that the community has for the school committee. Because if that respect wasn't there, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be seeing a favorable response.
Chris, did you have a question or comment?
Yes. So, you talked about how difficult it is to find a superintendent. What's the search process like for an assistant superintendent? Are there a lot of strong candidates out there? Are we...
You have a larger pool because you get principals, curriculum directors, central office administrators aspiring to the assistant superintendency. Now, the advantage that you have there, I mean, you may follow the same process here, but the advantage you have there is the assistant superintendent process can take place under the supervision of the superintendent, which means you don't have all of the other technical legal things that happen for the process, but the school committee must confirm the appointment. But there's a, there's a larger pool of candidates for assistant superintendent.
Do most districts promote from within for the assistant superintendent?
I would say it's probably a little higher than a third, maybe as many as a half.
Okay.
But I, you know, you know what you have and I don't, so that would be totally up to you.
Glenn, I appreciate you confirming the process we've gone through so far, and that's helpful reassurance for us. The, literally, the only question that I've received is the one that we did give our superintendent a pay raise at the conclusion of the school year that ended in the summer, the 16-17 school year. And some people just questioned the appropriate...
Me and Retroactive raise?
No, no, the annual evaluation raise.
Going forward.
Okay. And some people have just questioned the appropriateness of that, not some people. One individual has questioned the appropriateness of that with the superintendent announcing her decision to retire six months from now. Do you want to offer your perspective on that?
Let me address that. This is, this is not an issue of politics, it's not an issue of ethics, it's an issue of mathematics. First of all, the superintendent generally gets a raise at the end of the year if the evaluation is satisfactory. If the superintendent only works a half a year, you only get half the raise. So it's not like you're giving somebody money when they're not going to be here. Secondly, in terms of the impact on pension, it's, it's, literally is like one-half of one-third of 3%. So the effect on the pension is minimal, but I think there are people who think that somebody's pension just goes up 3% when you give them a 3% raise, and that's really not the way it works. You would be more concerned if there was a 15% raise at the end of the year, which was designed to create a real artificial blip, but the state, the teacher retirement board watches this stuff very closely, and this is nothing to arouse even the raising of an eyelash, quite honestly. Every superintendent, the superintendents around the state have averaged about 3%. Everybody's providing that kind of an increase to their superintendents, and what that means is, and I'm making this up, but if I made $100,000 a year and I was getting a 3% raise, that means I would actually get $1,500 a year, which would be divided by three, because it's a three-year division, and it probably comes to something like $10 a week when the pension's done. And the pension, by the way, is paid by the retirement board, so it's not at the, it's not coming out of anybody's pocket in Foxborough.
Correct. I think that's a misperception that people have, that the town is paying for my retirement.
Yeah, it's the state teacher retirement board.
I've been paying into the teachers' retirement system since 1977, so for 40 years. So, and that's, like, just like other people paying to Social Security. So that's where it's coming.
Yes, representing the Social Security system, by the way, I just...
Right.
Put in a good word for the Social Security system, it's very stable, it's doing very well. Don't let anybody tell you otherwise.
Glad to hear it.
But they're not going to get it because you've been in the public sector. That's correct.
Right.
I wish Social Security would give me 80% of my high three, but they're not so...
Well, I'm not reaching full pension, so don't worry about that.
Well, see, because she didn't listen to me.
[laughing]
I said daytime TV is terrible.
Thank you, Glenn, for your comments.
She's doing what's best for Foxborough and...
Thank you. Tina?
I don't have, I don't have any questions for Glenn. I just, he says, used the phrase, I wanted to thank him, "internal cultivation of leadership," and "internal leadership cultivation." I think we have seen that for years under Mrs. Spinelli's leadership and, you know, with Dr. Berdows, and I think that's one reason we were so confident in our decision and unanimous in our decision to make this transition as smooth as possible and promote Dr. Berdows from assistant superintendent to superintendent. And, you know, we, we have all the confidence in the world in your ability, and I think we have seen the promotion of others within our district internally. So I think, I love that phrase, "internal cultivation of leadership." So I just wanted to thank them.
You know, this is what we told you last time you were looking for a superintendent, seven years ago.
Yeah.
And we cite Foxborough to a lot of other districts. You were not the first to do it, but you were the first to do it in a major way that drew public attention, but not unfavorable. So since that time, we've seen the number of people just willing to do it increase.
And we appreciate the good press.
Absolutely.
Thanks for citing us.
Thank you for coming, Glenn.
Any other questions or comments for Glenn? Glenn, thanks for reaffirming our approach, we appreciate it. It's great to see you. Thanks for the update on what's going on with the state.
Yeah.
And some of the other districts.
I just want to thank Glenn, because even though the MASC is the school committee association, superintendents get a lot of benefit out of the relationship our committees have with MASC as well, so I want to thank you for all that.
We'll be calling you in January about interim superintendencies.
[laughing] Well, I don't know about that.
They all come crawling back to us.
Glenn, thanks for coming to Foxborough.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
That's funny. No, I love my job. If I tended to show up full-time somewhere, every single day, it would definitely be back here at the office, so. It's funny.
Okay, we have several minutes to look at tonight. First is, at least the first of my packet, was the executive session from July 24th. I personally didn't see any questions or comments or changes, but did anybody have any, anything they wanted to change on the executive session minutes of July 24th?
I saw nothing to change.
Motion to accept?
Since I'm signing them, can I move to accept them? I just want to clarify that.
I think so, because we've all reviewed them, and you're a voting member of the school committee.
And I will make a motion to accept the minutes of the July 24th, 2017 executive session.
Second.
All those in favor? Three, zero. The next set of minutes are...
Make a motion to release those minutes before we move on.
Good point.
I make a motion to release the executive session minutes of July 24th, 2017.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor? Three, zero. The next minutes, thanks Tina. The next minutes are the regular meeting minutes of the same day, when we left executive session and went into our regular open session. Again, I didn't see any changes I would propose.
I had none.
Chris, any?
No, make a motion that we accept the regular meetings of July 24th.
I will second that motion.
Any further? All those in favor? Three, zero. Thank you, Janet, for keeping up with all this good stuff. And then we have a policy subcommittee meeting minutes. Mr. Connolly and Ms. Lord spent some time looking at some of the policies that we're going to be looking at for the first time tonight.
I will move to accept the subcommittee, policy subcommittee meeting minutes of July 28th, 2017.
No second.
Any further? All those in favor? Three to zero. I think that's all, all right? All right, and Tina, thanks for your part, keeping up with the minutes, as well as our vice chair and clerk. Appreciate that. Okay, so we are ready for our update on summer work. Okay, so we are ready for our update on summer work with Mr. Yukna, Mr. Hayer, and Mr. Musali. Tony, do I pronounce that right?
Perfect.
Musali.
Yeah.
All right. Bill, do you want to kick it off?
Sure. Come on, guys. As typical, you know, we only have ten weeks to do a fair amount of work when we don't have people in our way to be able to have an open frame on everything. So, I give both these guys a, a lot of credit for what we accomplished. I will say on our facility side, over the last three, four years, we have done some very, very large projects during the summer, trying to get the district really in a, a good place relative to whether it's, you know, heating systems, electrical systems, that type of stuff. So, I think we're, we're far better off than we were. But, you know, needless to say, we do have buildings that are, are aging, so we're trying to do our best to make sure that they give us every ounce that we can get out of them. So, I guess we'll, we'll start with Tony relative to the annual stuff we do, but also you'll see that there's a few items that are typically annual, but that we've, we've also tried to pick up on.
So, summer again, we do our annual stuff, which is basically stripping and waxing all the floors, shampoo and, and the cot beds and getting everything all cleaned up. You know, we get about a half a million square, you know, five hundred thousand square feet. And also, we, we finish the gyms every year. And this year was actually the first time since I've been in the district that we've done the Yearhearn and the, and the high school last age. They were really in poor shape. Boy, what a difference, sort of sanding in the, it's a nice year or day makes them shine. And we also, we painted the, did a lot of painting throughout the district, not the whole building, but we got areas that were, you know, like the lobby at the high school, the lobby over at the tailor. I mean, classrooms that were really in, you know, desperate need of painting. Well, that's just the regular annual stuff, and also we do all the filters throughout the whole district. You know, you got the univents, I mean, some schools, the Yearhearn has two hundred univents alone. So, we do the univents and then all the rooftop units. So, that's something that's good. It keeps, you know, keeps everybody healthy doing it that way, so that's why we do it. We do it definitely a couple times. Do it to summertime, and a lot of times we'll get in here and do it during, during, during the fall, too.
I don't think I've ever heard about our changing of the air filters, but I think it makes total sense.
Oh, you have to. I mean, it's, you know, we pull them out.
And you can only imagine how many we have.
They're working. But, you know, it's, it's good. It keeps a healthy environment when you do that. And then we also had a lot of paving maintenance this year, so we, we, they did the area going off of Mechanic Street, you know, Mechanic Street going into the circle of the Yearhearn. I'm still waiting. I'm going to have that strike before school start. I'm working on that. Also, we're, they're doing the, the tailor. There was a big walkway that comes off of North High. We're doing that and some patching over in the driveway also. So, and then, you know, one of the biggest ones we did, we added, I think another, made the, the IGO fenced-in area there, another fifteen feet deeper, wider. So, and we put it in the, and also the big help from the PTO helped out paying for the fence, which we ended up putting up a ten-foot fence, so the balls don't keep going over and it's, I think they're going to like it. I think it's going to keep the balls in there, keep the kids in there and-
That's where you moved the playground, right, in the back?
Yeah, we moved, we took it from the playground. We didn't take it from the, you know, where the new shed is that the PTO bought last.
The back of the IGO, like toward the church.
Right. Yeah, so we, we added, we made it bigger. We just asphalted the fences, just about finished. It's up, but we've still got to get the gates up and put the hoops and all that kind of stuff for the kids, but we're always there till the end.
Yeah, one of the issues on that, and Mike Stanton obviously worked very closely with the, the PTO, because what they realized is, first of all, it's one of our, it's our largest elementary, but from an outside playground, all the other schools have fairly good-sized paved areas around the buildings. In the IGO's case, because the paved areas are the parking lots, they really didn't have as big an area, and so by increasing the size of this particular playground area during the really foul weather, when you can't get to the playground itself, other than, you know, sliding down the hill, this gives the ability, custodians, keep that area clean. They can obviously remove all the snow, but so the kids can still go out and they can still play basketball, they can still, you know, dodgeball, the type of things, you know, in, in a controlled area, not where cars are. So, it was a, it was a great idea, but it was really very helpful that the PTO also stepped up. You know, we used our funds on the paving inside, but they stepped up to do the fencing side, so I think it will be a, a very good added advantage to that school.
Did you say that was Mr. Stanton's initial request?
Yes, yeah. It was one of the things he pushed for, so.
Yeah, what a nice, what a nice thing for the IGO. And you're right, they're surrounded by all the parking, but of course, the advantage they have is the booth, all the booth space right there in the nice weather, so.
Right. And a ten-foot, you know, we went from a six-foot fence to a ten-foot fence.
Keeping the balls in, well.
Yeah, that helps when the kids have to come out, David, but we'd be good on that, you know, and every year we're doing upgrades. So, this year, we obviously, you know, we've got a new boiler going into the IGO, just about ready to be fired up by the end of the week. And that, that was a huge, because it was a lot of money savings from rebates from MassSave and, and the old, the other boilers, boy, they have, they, they had, they got their money for it, you know, but-
I think we had mentioned the IGO boiler was about to go, so.
Last year, we actually ended up spending a fair amount on maintenance on it just to get it to run through the season, but it was not something we were comfortable that was going to give us a long-term, you know, advantage. And ironically, it's not a, it's not, you know, a fifty-year-old boiler, but again, that is the biggest elementary, sixty-two thousand square feet, three stories in some areas, and if we lose a boiler in that, and they had two boilers, but if we lose one in the prime season, we really wouldn't be capable of keeping the building to the right temperature. So, and obviously, if it goes in the winter, that's not the time you want to have to try to do something like this. So, Tony did some research last year when we had the problem. We knew we couldn't get, timing-wise, get it to work. The program with MassSave is, is a one, one project a year setup. As Tony said, it's a, this, in this particular year, it was a twenty-six thousand dollar rebate, which was fairly significant, and the, I think from what, you know, what we've seen, even talking to the manufacturer of the boiler, they were surprised that we were capable of getting that level of rebate to do this. So, I also think the big advantage is going to be on that particular one is the efficiency we'll get this year. So, I'm really interested in seeing it, because as you know, we do have a similar aging problem to, at our Taylor School, which actually are older boilers, and, you know, there's three of them there that were a little-
Original.
Yeah, original. So, if this program works, and again, that's a little bit smaller building, that would be something we would really want to, you know, entertain going forward, but, you know, we're fortunate, we've got the option of getting one up and running and making sure it works the way it's supposed to, so.
So, it was a high-efficiency boiler?
High-efficiency.
Ninety-five percent?
Ninety-six percent.
Ninety-six.
And, you know, they, they literally take up about a third of what the old boilers took up in space, and again, you know, being gas units, they're as efficient as you can possibly get them, so. We're really, like I said, it's, that's a big building, it's not probably the best insulated building, so it'll be interesting to see how well it works. We use this manufacturer, as far as boilers go, it's Veesman. We used them first in two thousand one on the, on the Yearhearn school. It's the same size schools as the high school, and that was the one that showed us how efficient these things could be. It actually reduced our costs by fifty percent over what the high school was running. So, right now, we run the high school, the middle school, and hopefully the IGO with this level of technology. The beauty we have found with this manufacturer is even after two thousand one, they still come and use our school as a reference point, and when we have questions or issues, they still stand right behind it. So, a very, very strong relationship, I think, we've built with them, but also it's a very efficient one as far as where we can go with these, the equipment.
Bill was kind enough to give me a tour of it the other day. It's pretty-
Actually, when you look at it, it looks like one boiler, but it's really two boilers in one big unit. So, there's two burners in it, there's two chambers in it. So, you're not always running a three-million BTU boiler out like we did on the other one. So, this one will run at one and a half, and then when it's needed, the other one will kick, and, and they go lead-lag, so they can, it's, it's the way to go these days. Technology has come a long way.
Good. Thanks for finding that, Tony.
Yeah, and there's always, you know, there's always stuff going on anyway. I had a lot of work done in the, the high school gym this year. I had all the cables replaced for the basketball, spend a few, you know, you have to every so many years replace that stuff, the safety cables and a lot of bleacher work we did in there. When, today they put a motor, you know, mo, you know, new basketball motors, stuff like that. There's stuff that just wears and tears and goes after so many years. So, I've got a very decent company that comes in and does that, doesn't, like an actual inspection. So, if anything does happen, when you're sure, we have something to prove that, you know, we had an inspection done, and so that's been, we've been good on that end. And also over at the, at the Yearhearn, we're in the process of replacing a hundred-ton compressor. So, these units were put in back, and they're two-hundred-and-twenty-five-ton units. You know, the ones out back that you can hear when you walk in there. So, unfortunately, we did pretty good. We went on for sixteen years on one, you know, and this is, each unit has two compressors in it. And we're changing our, you know, first compressor. You know, we looked at both ways of buying, but at this point, really, you know, if you keep replacing them, it's a different story, but I think we've got some life with them at this point, so we just replaced the compressor and, and we've just been going along, you know, doing a lot of this masonry work, too, because part of that boiler job, I have to do close, you know, do some masonry work over at the IGO. So, we end up grabbing some of the bricks from the town hall because they're the same kind. And save a few bucks.
Reuse, recycle.
Yeah, why not, right? So, we did that. And also, in the process this week, we're going to be, as an annual thing I always do, I should have brought that up early, but we're doing the playground ouch. That's something. We got a hundred and seventy yards coming in, so there's a company that comes in and blows it in and making sure it's good.
That's great.
But we're always moving along and just keeping everything going with the, you know, that's what you have to do. You've got to keep the PM going. If you let them go, then things break down more, but if you prevent maintenance, replace stuff, oil stuff. And speaking of that, we just hired a new maintenance man, Jeff Whitehouse, great guy. He's got a lot of, a lot of licenses he brought to the town with plumbing and, and, and it's really, it's really going to make the, you know, the, the team a lot stronger, you know, what was before, but it's actually going to, so now we'll have, you know, an in-house, kind of like an in-house plumber that's, you know, he's been, like I said, he's been working, since he started, he's been at the IGO, hasn't left yet.
And he's Foxborough.
Yes, absolutely, yep. And I believe his, his dad was also a water and sewer department. But, and that's it. I mean, any questions right now?
Yeah, I have a question about the paving.
Yep.
So, how far in advance do you plan out the paving schedule?
Ah, I'd say towards the end of the summer, we kind of look and walk, because you don't know what the winter brings us, you know, and then usually a winter does affect a lot of driveways and stuff. So, usually around like May or something, we start looking at it, May, June.
The issue with the paving, quite honestly, is that it really depends on how well we were able to manage the year's budget and to see if we had some extra money, because we don't typically, in past years, before both Tony and I got here, when they did a project, they'd go to the town and ask for CIP, you know, money, like the Burl School was two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to re-pave and recurve. So, we had to walk into the town and ask for a fairly large chunk of money. What, what we've done under Tony and I being here is, is try to see if we can carve out a few dollars at the end of each year and do an area of, of buildings. So, as you know, the IGO, it actually took us three years, but we went around the entire building over three years worth of time, did the worst section first, and kept working our way around. The other thing we have learned, which we never were doing before, was we've really learned to piggyback off the town's surge bid with paving. So, every year, they're doing obviously a million dollars or so in roadwork, and they are a, in a group of about seventeen towns that bids out the paving. They get a price for pavement that is so far below anything we were ever doing on our side that they let us basically say, okay, this is the projects we want to also do on your surge bid. And so, by doing that, we have, when I originally got a price to do the IGO a few years ago, it was about two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars to do the whole thing. In the end, with the program, the way we did it, it cost us about a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifteen thousand, I think was the, the total number. So, you can see that not only is it less than half of what it was going to be if we just went out and did it on our own, but we were able to do it in a way that we didn't have to go back to the town and ask for additional funding to do it. And, and I think that's, you know, we, we got a little heat last year, I think you remember somebody making a comment about, well, you know, you didn't turn the money back and then ask for the money again. I think the, and we, we explained this, that the justification we're doing is if we're fortunate enough to be able to control our cost in areas, or if we're lucky enough that we, you know, encountered additional retirees that we didn't anticipate, that funded additional money, our responsibility first and foremost to the town is to keep our facilities and our educational process to the best we can. It's so, it makes no sense for us to turn around and give back fifty dollars, to turn around and ask for fifty dollars, and, and it's just like you're going to be in this process constantly. Obviously, if the money's not there, we can't do it. But, you know, if it is there, we take advantage of everything we can to get the best deal out of it. So, you know, Tony's a hundred percent right. Usually, by the end of May, we're looking and saying, okay, what's the worst? You know, what did this winter destroy on us? Now, if you think about it, the IGO, I mean, the Yearhearn was done two thousand and one, so basically fifteen, sixteen years with bus traffic, car traffic on a constant basis. The, the biggest part of the traffic comes in from Mechanic Street to that circle, and driving around that circle and driving. And so, what had happened was it actually started to crumble. So, obviously, they're going to start to plow it right off the top. It was going to be gone. So, rather than let that happen, we had them, the actual road crew come in and grind the surface off the top. Again, not having to rip the whole thing up saves us a lot of money, and then resurface the entire top with two and a half inches of asphalt, and it, it looks like brand-new. And it will last us, you know, a, a good ten to twelve years by doing it that way versus having to rip the whole thing out and start all over.
Is there a plan to do any more paving, particularly the back parking lot where the fields are during the school year? Or would that have to wait till next year?
The back parking lot here at the high school?
Yes, baseball, softball.
I don't know that we would pave that at this point in time. What we want to do is continue to put some more base down on it. We need that to really get packed hard before we put any level of, of pavement on it. What we need to do is actually expand that parking going along the, the outer ranks, you know, to get additional parking, but I think our, our first thing right now is to really try to keep the current pavement up to snuff, which we have some, you know, the Burl's in very good shape, the Taylor's in excellent shape, the IGO now is in excellent shape, and the Yearhearn, there's still some more to, to do, some areas that are, again, you know, starting to decay. So, once those are done, then yes, it's, you know, that would be where funding would come unless the school committee chooses to do otherwise.
I think the one thing that sticks in my mind on that topic is the point Chris brought up a few months ago about what can we do for emergency access, and I'm sure you're still thinking about and working on.
Yeah, and actually, we're working with the DPW on a way to, to change the, the controls that are in there as far as the gates and the fences and where they are and how we access through there. So, that's something we can do, though, but that, that really isn't whether you have pavement or not having pavement.
Right, understood.
So, the beauty of what pavement would do for us, quite honestly, is being able to line it.
And be able to mark.
Which would be a little bit more obvious to, to that. But that's also not a large area, so again, depending on what kind of funding we were, you know, able to have at, at any given point in time, we would definitely look at it.
Any other comments for Tony?
I just think they do a great job, and, you know, every, everything you do makes the schools a safer, better place for our students and our staff, and thank you for everything you're doing.
It's not me, it's all the guys that-
All of you, collective you.
Yeah, exactly. It's, without them, I couldn't do it all.
Please tell them, Tony, please tell them, as you see them the next few days, that we said, that we said thank you.
It's the team, you know, all my guys and everything, that's, like I said, they're the ones that do it all, and they're just keeping them going and-
Please tell the team that we said thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
It's the floors that continue to amaze me every time. But I have to say, Tony's very proactive, so you do tend to say, this is a problem, let's do it now before it becomes a worse problem. So, I think that, that's why, thank you for that. But they, they do, nobody ever wonders what that crew does all summer. They barely have a minute.
I will add that I usually, if I see something, I say, oh, that needs to be fixed. Then I turn around and the next thing I know, there it is, it's done. There was a big, no, I don't, it wasn't really a pothole, but next to the tennis courts. I had parked next to the tennis courts the other day, and I was going for a walk with a friend, and there's this big giant puddle, because it had rained, but it was a big divot next to it, and I said, oh, I hope they paved that. It was paved to, well, I don't know if it was paved today, but I was here today, and I said, it's all fixed, there you go, done. It's great. I didn't even complain to you about it. It was done.
No comment, right, Bill?
No, Tony knows I'm the biggest complainer, so.
It's all right.
Yeah, Bill's like old eagle eye. He drives around, sees everything and says, I'm going, so we can get that done.
We're here for, you know, for the students and-
Exactly.
Looks great, Tony, thank you. So, Aaron, you're going to give us a few highlights of your summer?
I am excited to be here to share with you all the hard work and things that have been done in technology this summer. And first, I'd like to start off and thank our leadership team, the leadership of Debbie Spinelli and her vision for technology, Amy Berdus and Bill Yukna. We continue to make great strides every year in this, in this area, particularly infrastructure, but also supporting our- but also supporting our instructional program. Also like to, to thank your support as a committee and the community of Foxborough, very supportive, continuing to support us at town meeting with our capital plan, which allows us to replace aging equipment and continue to move technology forward as a priority within our instructional programs. This was a very, very, very busy summer, and it was with very careful planning and precision execution that all of these things were able to get done. And I'm glad to report that our schools are just about ready in the next, next day or so. We'll be ready for students to come back. So over this summer, we continue our refresh program, we refreshed approximately a hundred class, a hundred classrooms worth of computers, approximately a hundred and ten computers, so some of these classrooms have more than one specialist or instructor in them. So again, those were primarily at the high school and the Taylor School. So in the seventh, approximately seventh or eighth year in terms of, of age on those computers, so those are able to be refreshed with new equipment so that they will be reliable for our instructors. Three computer labs this year were refreshed, the high school history lab, on your way out, if you get a chance, the room right behind us, you'll see that there, there's new equipment in there. And this equipment, it's not just the computing power that we need to run our programs and for our students, but it also improves the instructional environment. And if, if you get a chance to see the room, you'll notice that the monitors, they're telescoping in terms of the stand, so you're, you're able to move them down very close to the table and pivot them so the teachers can maintain eye contact with students. It's very important in terms of being able to, to maintain student attention and, and pick up on cues and things when students might necessarily not be understanding what's going on in class. So, so those were done. The high school history lab, the academic lab and the science lab here at the high school all refreshed this summer. Continuing to, to outfit our schools with technology, again, that meets our instructional program, we reconfigured the equipment, the deployment equipment at the Hearn School. This was quite the task in terms of moving computers from some of the seventh and eighth grade rooms down to the fifth and sixth grade rooms. And then outfitting the building with eighty new mobile tablet devices, so these are touch-enabled tablets. It's roughly four carts of twenty units, allows us to have one touch-enabled tablet card per grade level. And this is, this is in addition to the number of carts and mobiles that are already in the building. So that building has gone quite mobile, along with our instructional program there, so it continues to go in that direction.
Erin, those are units that stay in the school, they don't go home with the students?
They are units that stay in the school, correct. Desktop computer memory, we upgraded approximately seven hundred and fifty computers this year in terms of computer memory. Getting the computers up in terms of specifications so that they can run the most current software and instructional programs for, for students and teachers. This is a great way for us to, to extend the lifecycle on our equipment. It's often, as we know, that technology changes so quickly that we, that, that you may believe you need to replace this equipment or it doesn't perform well, and we're able to get a lot of value out of upgrading memory for twenty-five or thirty dollars per machine and it's able to extend the lifecycle of that machine sometimes by two and three years. So approximately seven hundred and fifty computers throughout the schools were upgraded. One of the, the larger tasks and projects this summer was upgrading our entire computer fleet to Windows ten and Office twenty sixteen. So Windows ten being the newest, latest and greatest offering from Microsoft in terms of desktop operating systems. And Office twenty sixteen or Office three sixty-five, the newest iteration of desktop publishing software and productivity software from, from Office. This, this upgrade was big. It, it, it required us to touch every machine in the district in terms of reapplying the operating system and productivity software. But it was also an opportunity to optimize these machines for teaching and learning, but also to implement some practices around universal design. So now is a regular ed accommodation available to all students through the accessibility tools built into Windows ten. We, we're now able to offer things like text to speech and speech to text, okay? So these technologies in the past have been cost prohibitive or, or only, we were only able to provide them through specialized software, so they were typically seen as a, an assistive technology or a special ed accommodation are now part of our regular ed accommodation plans or regular ed opportunities for students. So all students now have access to these technologies which may help them in terms of their personal learning style. All classrooms reset up and tested, so approximately eighteen hundred computers throughout the district. So part of the maintenance program is that all of the, the classrooms are disassembled and thoroughly cleaned in which we assist the, the custodial staff in getting the computers back into the rooms, getting them set up, getting them tested. And, and this year, along with our, our maintenance and reimaging. There were a number of cabling projects this year, primarily the high school and the Hearn, a couple of computer labs. Wiring was repaired or, or moved to, to avoid obstructions in terms of the instructional setting and, and just to, to make sure that the facilities are safe and ready for students as they return. Thirty-five access points replaced, so again, we really appreciate the community of the, the support of the community in terms of when we first established our computer refresh plan, we were often talking about computers, that's, that's what we're talking about. And now we're talking about computers, we're talking about access points, we're talking about projectors. So as technology changes, these things too need to be refreshed. So, so through, you know, through the capital refresh, through really aggressive pricing and through the district's E-Rate grant process the past two years, we've been able to maintain and at a, at a really affordable, in a really affordable way, our wireless access and offerings. We continue to build that up.
I, I don't know what that means. Wireless access point?
So, so wireless access points.
Like it's where you connect to the wireless internet?
Right.
Correct, so it's, it's the piece of equipment, you'll see them throughout the district that allow for wireless access.
Okay.
And if you're too far away from one, you won't have any.
You won't have it, correct. And, and two, really, there's been a shift in terms of the instructional program. So when we first were talking, when we first started talking about wireless in schools, we're talking about coverage. So how do we get signal and coverage in every part of the building? Now we're really talking about capacity. So it, it's really not that coverage is our problem anymore, it's how do we get, you know, twenty-five, thirty, forty, sixty people connected to, to, to wirelessly within a small area? So again, so it's, it's been a shift from, you know, coverage, just having a strong signal everywhere and maybe a few people that are connecting to it, to being able to provide the capacity for one, for things like one-to-one computing opportunities where we're using mobile carts in a classroom, where there may be twenty-five or thirty mobiles in a small area, not to mention our BYOD offering where students are bringing in their own devices. It's not uncommon that we see in a classroom upwards of a hundred wireless devices sometimes in terms of students having phones, students having their own technology, and then also the technology in which we're providing, so that can be quite the task.
How many devices do you think are connected on a given day when, you know, between students, teachers?
Parents.
To come in, administrators?
So we see, we, we see between the high school and the middle schools, the two that we watch most closely, upwards of twelve hundred devices in a day, and that's unique devices. So it's, it's quite a bit.
That's a lot, yeah.
And just going back comparatively.
Twelve hundred devices in a school that's two hundred kids, well, two hundred kids times two are.
Well, when you think about, we didn't have wireless.
Middle and the high school.
It's about seventeen hundred kids.
Between the middle, the middle and the high school.
Yeah.
I mean comparatively, three years ago, we were seeing somewhere about two hundred and twenty, two hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
You know, so in, in three years, you know, there's, there's been four or five hundred percent growth.
And I think that's one of the, the nice things about the way Erin's kinda developed our, our internal network is that they've developed it very thoughtfully with the types of equipment that can also monitor. So, you know, again, years ago, when we put the first ones out, we really weren't concerned if there were five, ten, we didn't know what would be running. But now he has the, the software and the technology basically set up so that he can see when the peak times of the day are, he can see, you know, within a building what the issues that, you know, what people are actually kinda pushing through, if it's, you know, big video streams and stuff like that. They can, they can kinda monitor that whole thing, which, you know, obviously data, like we say on the curriculum side, is, is important, well, it's extremely important on the network side when you're trying to develop things. He also just mentioned something which I wanna make sure that the committee understands, because we've talked about it before, and that's just the E-Rate structure. E-Rate in past years was huge when it came to communications for, you know, whether it was just regular phone lines or cell phones and that type of thing. That's how they, they wanted to get you discounts effectively from, generated by the state level on, on communications. They've gone away from that whole side. I think you remember a couple of years ago, we started showing you how the budget that we were gonna have to pay more and more for our phone side because we were losing the E-Rate structure. Well, what they created was a new structure which was to really help districts get their networks to the place that they needed to be. Now, unfortunately, a little late for Foxborough in the sense that we had already, you know, started moving in that direction. But, and we also thought, because we were a tier lower than most of these really high-knee districts, that we wouldn't get anything. Well, the reality is not too many districts really figured it out fast enough that they could put in for this stuff. And so we're putting in, you know, fairly large things like to refresh all of our, our wireless access points because again, now the ones that we bought five, six years ago aren't even strong enough to do the volume that we really wanna do. So we put in, you know, things, and, and because of the E-Rate districts, things that could cost us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, by the time the discounts are done and you work through the whole process can be forty, fifty thousand dollars on our side or less. And then as Erin said, he fights to get the best price we can get on top of that. So we're driving our costs way, way down, and we're getting these things now because not the, the other communities aren't doing it. So we're taking advantage of, of the whole E-Rate structure on a level that, you know, I'm, I'm sure more and more districts will figure out soon, but, you know, hopefully, we're doing it on the right side of it and getting as much as we can out of it. There is a limitation as to how much you can get out of it, so we'll, we'll get ours and then it will switch back to other people, but that's, that's fine, so.
In the last two years, I mean, we've realized or had the potential to realize upwards of a hundred-plus thousand dollars a year in funding and discounts. So this is, is, is quite the opportunity for a district like Foxborough, who in the past has never qualified for these types of, of funding opportunities and, and discounts.
That's great.
Power School, our student information system software has been, been upgraded. Our state student information reporting complete this summer. I, I think it's, it's, one of the things that we take for granted is the amount of work in terms of reporting and requirements, and this was talked about a little bit earlier tonight as we, we heard of, of the report from the, the Association of School Committees, that there, there are so many mandates in terms of reporting and, and accountability. And this really does utilize a, a large number of resources within our department to get these things done.
Yeah, I don't think people realize it either. We have to report student information a couple of times a year, staff information a couple of times a year, including all the classes they're teaching, what they're, and then they tie it to their license to make sure that they're appropriately licensed. So we have to, that's, so we have both educator reporting systems twice a year, and then we have student information a couple of times a year. And that requires looking at every single piece of data to make sure it's accurate, where kids are placed, who their instructor is, you know, what their numbers are, so it's, it's a lot of work.
Superintendent Spinelli just said, I mean, we're reporting out student biographical information, attendance, discipline, teacher's, teacher's schedules, student's schedules, student achievement, you know.
It's a lot.
It's, it's quite a bit. It went, it's gone from in the last twelve, twelve years that I've been involved in this, you know, a once or twice a year submission to an ongoing flow of data that's going back and forth.
And a lot of it used to be on paper.
Correct.
Twelve years ago, so you would just submit reports about this stuff, and now everything is synced online. So if, for example, let's say an error was made and a student said they're in this class, and we said this student is assigned to this course, and the, and it, and they weren't ordered, assigned to this teacher and there was a mistake of that, it would kick back and say this teacher isn't licensed for that something, so we have to correct mistakes. So it's, it's really, it's quite sophisticated and labor-intensive.
It really is. So our student information reporting was completed, our student information system configured for the new year, our department assists all of the building with, buildings with things like scheduling. So our, our schedules are, are complete. Again, that, that is work that goes on from May right up until, you know, the second, third week in August, you know, where those things are, are being completed and working with guidance to resolve any outstanding issues. Our new student analytic and assessment platform is synced with Power Schools, biographical information going back and forth and sharing of information. And happy to announce that today we had our first training, and things went, seemed to go quite well. Leadership and department heads seem to be very, very excited about the opportunities that they see.
And you're gonna give us a demo of that on the agenda somewhere down the road we talked about, right?
Absolutely. See, when one door closes, another one opens. We, we were devastated when that company, you know, didn't, wasn't gonna support it. And as Amy said, I trust her, we found something way, much better, and people are much happier with it, so you never know.
Now, last, lastly, last week at our administrative team retreat, we conducted a focus group in which we started to discuss technology and our future technology plan. So hope to be reporting out in the next several weeks and, and hopefully the end of this calendar year in terms of the new technology plan for Foxborough.
That's awesome.
Tell you guys, we get a lot of presentations and updates and reports at school committee meetings throughout the year, and every year I remember this one.
Oh, yeah.
So this is one of the ones I remember every year, because it's just amazing how much work you guys do.
In a short period of time.
In a short period, compressed period of time. So I don't know if anybody has any questions, I just wanna thank Erin, like we did with Tony. Erin, please thank your team for us.
Well, lastly, again, it, it is a collaborative effort, and I too would like to, to thank my staff, our data specialists, our, our technical staff, our data specialists, again, our leadership, but, but also the maintenance staff, because it really is such a collaborative effort in terms of scheduling and getting these things to happen and getting rooms clean and getting them put back together. And it really is all hands on deck, so again, thank you to Tony and Carl and the, the maintenance and custodial staff. And again, all, really, all of the hard work that's done by all over the summer, it's, it's really so very collaborative, so.
It's great.
That's a great team.
Anything else, Bill?
Nope.
Great job, guys, great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask them, you know, are they nervous about how much they have left with the number of days before first day of school?
They'll get it done.
Well, that's, that's why we all had to come in the front, because the back section's being waxed. And guess who's back tomorrow? All the staff. They always pull it off, though.
Yep, exactly.
I'd just say again, if, if I may, it, it is amazing the amount of work, as you said. But I, I think we should note that I don't know how many years ago it was, we did not have an IT department. This is a whole department of people who are intrinsic to our school, to our, to our school department, to our education, actually to the town now, within the town, and they do a marvelous job. But when people are looking at why, you know, our, our positions are growing, that is a prime example of one that, that has enhanced our educational value to our students and our staff and our town, and is worth every single penny.
It is, and the more you grow in technology, whether it's the town side or our side, the more people you need. Now, we haven't added a lot, their capacity is pretty, pretty great.
What they do with the amount of people they have.
But every, every department, the public safety departments, every department is in, is expanding their use of technology because ultimately it makes us more, the rest of us more efficient and, but that doesn't mean you don't need more technology people to support it, because you do. There's more applications, there's more software, there's more hardware needed, there's more, you know, networking needed. So they do a pretty fabulous job of all of it.
I was getting a little nervous when I heard Tony saying how technical the boilers are getting.
We're gonna be running those two next.
Everything's remote, Joe.
Hopefully not.
I think, to add on, Tina, I think, you know, one of the things that schools struggle with so much is keeping up with the technology curve that the students are expecting. And I do feel comfortable, especially being in this field, I do feel comfortable, like Erin, what you've brought and your team have brought to Foxborough. You know, we're, the challenge to keep up is always gonna be there, but I think we're doing the right things. I mean, for example, your discussion about wireless access points, it no longer is a matter of coverage, but now it's a matter of capacity and tracking capacity. We're very fortunate to have someone like Erin who is measuring and monitoring that kinda thing. So it makes me, as someone in the technology field, feel really good that we're on the right path. And that's gonna be critical for schools going forward.
Yes.
Very difficult for schools to keep up with this.
Very lucky to have you, Erin. Very lucky to have you, Aaron.
Thank you. Okay, that was great. School district goals for 2017, 2018, we looked at these in prior meetings. For the community listening in, you can see a set of these, I'm sure, on our website.
Once they're voted.
Once they're voted. But they have the same categories we've had in the past, communication slash community relation goals, because the, the communication between the district and staff and parents and community is something that we think is critical, both the school leadership and the committee. The second category is student achievement, which of course, we track in multiple ways with multiple student populations multiple times throughout the year. The third category that is in our Foxborough Public Schools, School District Goals is financial management, which is something we've always been committed to and always will be. The fourth category is policy development, which we're going to see an example of that shortly with some updating of our policies. And then, of course, we, as the school committee, and our responsibility for overseeing the role of the superintendent, the superintendent's performance is the final category that we document in our school district goals. I, I, I thought this captured the discussion, I recall. And so, I didn't have any comments or updates. I don't know, Tina or Chris, if you saw anything, or Amy or Debbie or Bill, anything you guys want to talk about further, or whether you're comfortable approving the goals.
I, I went back through my notes from our July meeting and I thought everything that we discussed was accurately reflected here in this document. I didn't have any changes. I couldn't even find any spelling or punctuation errors to correct. I think it looks good.
She does, you know she tries.
We do.
I, I do try most of the time to, we all need proofreaders, myself included. So, if I do something, she proofreads for me. If she does something, I proofread. So, we, we do try to make an effort to...
Well, it looks good.
To avoid that. But I do think it represents exactly what we talked about, but I also think it represents everything that's going on in the district lately, the new three strategic plan, the fact that we are about to start the development of a new technology plan. So, we are at the beginnings of a lot of things. And a little bit greater emphasis on our global education and global citizenship that does matter to us now. And as part of that, I just want to make sure I don't forget to say, we have two international students coming this year.
That's great.
And they'll be arriving Wednesday for their new student orientation, so I look forward to meeting them and their host families. But that's part of our whole, you know, expansion of global education and global awareness, so.
Where are they from, Debbie?
China.
Both of them.
Two girls, seniors from China.
Excellent. You know, you were great to point out some of those things because you're right, those are some new themes or nuances that, that we discussed that run throughout this. So, thank you for going a little bit deeper in that detail. Chris, any observations or thoughts from you? We're good to go. Anybody want to motion to accept or approve the school district goals?
I'll make a motion to accept the Foxborough Public Schools, School District Goals for 2017, 2018.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. And just for the public, that's what we will look at, you know, as a committee, as we continue to manage our roles on behalf of the public when we work with the superintendent and her team. That's how, at least I, and I think the rest of us probably, review the progress we're making and what we're focused on. So, that's great. Okay. Chris, do you want to tell us a little bit about the policy work? There's a number of new policies, or updates to current policies that you and Bevy were working through, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, yeah, so there was a sheet here, I think it's five pages of different stuff that they asked us to look at, and we chose the ones that I think affect us the most. And we kind of narrowed it down, so tonight, we have four policies.
Okay. And so, that, these are the four that we've planned to be updating at, at this time, the others we didn't feel were as necessary or relevant?
Right. We thought that our Foxborough one handled it and most of it, and we're adding some like cross-reference stuff just for the legal reference in some of them, but these are the four that we found that we should act on.
And Chris shared with me in a separate meeting, some of the work and thoughtfulness he put into the discussions, and I think, Amy, you might have been a part of that a little bit, just to look at which ones really did merit further review and which ones you felt were things that we had well-covered already, if I'm, am I remembering that right?
Yeah. Yeah, we looked through everything we had, compared it to the state, and then chose the ones that we didn't really affect. Some of these we had, we just, these are just condensed.
Yeah. Okay. So, did we make changes to these four already that you want to review tonight in a first reading?
Uh, yeah, the, I don't think we had the domestic violence leave policy at all.
Okay.
So, that's a completely new one.
Okay.
And the other ones are just kind of combining different ones together.
So, what do we want to review, Chris? The, the ones that are yellow, are these changes that we've made, Janet? Is that what I recall?
The difference is, the first group are our current policies.
Yep. Which you wrote us, thank you for noting that for me.
Well, yeah. And the second group is what MASC suggested should look like. So, anything that's in yellow or, you know, crossed out on their policy would be the suggested changes for ours.
Okay.
Is that right, Chris?
Mm-hmm.
That's good.
Yeah.
So, there are, we talked about four new ones. But Chris, your comment about the domestic violence leave policy, do we want to wait on reviewing that one then, until you and Bevy have had more time to look at that? Is that what you were saying?
No, this one is a...
It's a totally new policy.
Totally new one.
Okay.
That one isn't, isn't like a change that we had, we're updating or anything.
Okay. So, we, so we need to read all four of these tonight as a first reading, and we can take turns, you don't have to do them all. But we have to read them into record, and then we wait till the next meeting to decide, do we like the changes that you and Bevy have worked through, and then we can approve them at, at a second reading. And we're allowed to waive the second reading for any really long ones.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, Tina, am I remembering all the procedure right?
All, all correct.
All right. So, Chris, would you like to read one of them? Maybe each of the three of us could, could read one just to save you, or you can read them all if you'd like. Actually, four of them.
Yeah, the, the last one's the long one. Um, yeah, I'll do the use of electronic messaging.
Okay.
By school committee members. As elected public officials, Foxborough School Committee members shall exercise caution when communicating between and among themselves via electronic messaging services, including but not limited to electronic mail, email, internet web forums and internet chat rooms. Under the open meeting law, deliberation by...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. You, I, is he supposed to read the one that's the, got the changes in it?
Yeah.
Yeah, the MASC...
So, you want the one that's got the yellow?
Okay.
Yep.
I just want to make sure it's...
Then only if it's a slight change.
This, yeah, this one is the, the small one.
Yep.
This one just updated like the types of messaging. So, as elected public officials, school committee members shall exercise caution when communicating between and among themselves via electronic messaging services, including but not limited to electronic mail, email, text messages, social media postings, internet web forums and internet chat rooms. Under the open meeting law, deliberation by a quorum of members constitutes a meeting. Deliberation is defined as movement toward a decision, including but not limited to the sharing of an opinion regarding business over which the committee has supervision, control or jurisdiction. A quorum may be arrived at sequentially using electronic messaging without knowledge and intent by the author. School committee members shall, should use electronic messaging between and among members only for housekeeping purposes, such as requesting or communicating agenda items, meeting times or meeting dates. Electronic messaging should not be just used to discuss committee matters that require public discussion under the open meeting law. Under the public records law, electronic messages between public officials may be considered public records. Therefore, in order to ensure compliance, the school committee chair, in consultation with the superintendent of schools, shall annually designate a member of the central office staff who shall be copied on all electronic mail correspondence between and among members of the school committee, or the district shall provide district email addresses which are archived. These copies shall be printed and retained in the central office in the same fashion as any other school committee records. School committee members who do not have a computer or access to these messages shall be provided copies on a timely basis.
And the source of that is the MASC July 2016 and legal references MGL 4730A, 18 to 25, 23B and 6610. So, the main thing here, Chris, as I read it, is just as you said before you read it, they're listing some new areas that apply to, that this policy applies to, specifically text messages, social media postings, and the way committee members might be communicating to each other.
Yeah, it just updated different types of electronic messages that this got us.
I, I think, okay, that's a good first reading, just commenting on the policy and be curious what you guys think. I mean, I certainly don't have any issue with it. I think we are very careful about not having discussions electronically that should be done publicly. I don't know that we always designate a member of the central office staff who will be copied on all our correspondence. I think by definition, Janet, that's you.
Yeah.
I don't know that we have publicly, annually designated that in public, so I, I take that as something we can maybe just formally do each year. But I think we've done that, knowing it's you. And then, the point about you keeping copies of anything that we're communicating or, I mean, most, I, I think it is always typically about housekeeping-type stuff, but do you, I guess you should be printing that and keeping a copy.
I do try to print them and keep them.
Yep.
Incoming outgoing.
Yeah. So, I suspected you were doing that, and I just wasn't aware of it. But that's, so those are the points that I note in here.
Yep. I, I mean, it just catches up, including text messages and social media postings, which I think we've been careful about anyway. I think it's interesting that this policy was adopted only, you know, nine years ago and, and the technology, we've just been talking about the technology. The technology has changed in the way, I don't, I, I think it just catches our policies up to current technologies and the way we use our devices, and I think we've been careful about it, so it doesn't really address any problems that we've had, just, just catches our policy.
I mean, it's pretty much always just housekeeping.
Exactly. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. Chris, would you like to read another one, or would you like one of us to do it?
Um, I'll read another one late, after you guys get your turn.
I want to note that the one after this one is short, but that's okay.
So, Tina, I'll offer you your choice. I'll do the one you don't want. You want to do this one, or you want to do the long one?
It doesn't matter. I'm good either way.
Go ahead.
All right. I'll read the File FF, naming new facilities. Naming a school facility is an important matter that deserves thoughtful attention. Personal prejudice or favoritism, political pressure or temporary popularity should not be an influence in choosing a, a name for a school, a portion of a school or a portion of school grounds. I missed, the, the, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting myself, but Chris, the, the items that are struck, that's just, that's going to be deleted from the current policy.
Yeah, that's the deleted part.
So, I'll, I won't read that part then. Whenever possible, the wishes of the community, including parents and students, should be considered in naming school facilities. The school committee has the authority to approve the naming and renaming of buildings, structures and facilities located on school property. The school committee also has the authority to name subsections of existing structures or facilities such as classrooms, auditoriums and gymnasiums. Names and/or wording associated with school facilities shall be consistent with school district policies and promote messages aligned with the mission, vision and goals of the school district. To the extent possible, names and/or wording should be designed to, not to restrict the use of a space or inhibit changing the function of the space, should that become necessary in the future. When the opportunity to name or dedicate a new school or school-related property, structure or facility is forthcoming, an orderly procedure will be communicated at the next available school committee meeting. The committee's agendas should clearly reflect the intent to consider review and vote on naming opportunities. Submission of a name for schools, for a school space may be made by any resident or by the superintendent in writing and should be made to the school committee chairperson. If a name is being initiated at the local school level, the principal must take reasonable steps to include the school council and PTO in the nomination of the name before submission to the school committee. The written request should specify the intent of the requister and the reasons why this particular name would fit this facility. It should offer appropriate background information on the person or organization after which the facility will be named. An offer of a financial contribution to the school district may accompany the naming request, but the school committee is not obligated to accept or reject a name based upon financial considerations alone. Philanthropic contributions in support of the school district are encouraged by the school committee. The school committee may acknowledge generous donors by designating appropriate spaces within the school district's facilities, consistent with the level of financial commitment. Following the submission of a naming request, the school committee chairperson will specify a consideration period that allows for public comment, following which the committee will deliberate and vote on the name. And that is the end of this. And the source is MASC, August 2016. I don't see any legal, legal references to that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Chris, do you remember working through this one with Bevy and what struck you as some of the changes here that you want to call out for us? It looks like they've added a lot of specificity, regulation or procedural guidance is how I listen to that.
Yeah, it, the, the getting rid of the last paragraph, I think, was the big part, where the prompt decision-making and all that, this kind of gives us more time to think about things, and it made it a lot more specific of what we have to do for naming a new facility.
Did you notice anything here, Debbie, that struck you?
Yeah, I actually thought it was good because I think, when I read it, I thought, okay, the recent things, the school committee's name, we're still within these new guidelines.
I thought the same, I was thinking the same.
So, I thought, this is a good thing. But I thought it does provide better guidance as to what to do. And I think the shorter previous policy sort of gave you that sense of it, but it also, I think, left some things more open to either, either unexpected pressure or a lack of understanding how you could proceed or what your authority actually was. So, I, I kind of liked it. It's wordy, but it's clear. I think there's less room for making a mistake.
That's how I interpret it, too.
I, I do think the title of the policy should be naming new and existing facilities, though, because that is discussed within the content of the policy. And it looks to me like if turning the page to the next policy, that existing, naming of existing facilities is being changed to memorials. So, then we need to put some, this just says naming new facilities, but it's not talking about solely new facilities within the body of the thing. So, I think the title should be naming new and existing facilities.
Or naming facilities.
So, that, that was my question, is that this, the, the one that you're about, somebody's about to read, FFA, that replaces the naming existing facilities?
That's how I took this to read, but I...
Well, it's got the same file number?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, this one, the naming new facilities would be naming facilities or naming new and existing and then memorials.
That was my question, is, does the old one about naming existing still exist? I guess it doesn't.
I would guess it does not.
Hmm. So, then in that case?
Is there anything within that policy that we would want to bring into this? If, if this is covering new and existing facilities, you know, are some of the qualities that we have looked for in individuals who were naming facilities after?
Well, I do think what, I think what the committee should do between now and the next reading is that second paragraph in the naming existing, where it does kind of outline that it should be an individual known and recognized, et cetera, et cetera, for certain qualities, if you will. But I, I think that's been helpful to us in the past in considering suggestions for naming.
Yes, definitely has.
So, that was, that was my question, because I wasn't, I was on vacation the day they met. So, my question to Chris and to Bevy was going to be, if this completely replaces this, that second paragraph, do you want that?
Right. Well, even with the naming new facilities policy that's being, one of the sentences that is eliminated that, with regard to naming new school facilities, is that a name with educational significance or inspiration should be chosen? I, I think that's significant. I, I understand the changes that have been made with regard to the process of the naming, but I, I think as a school district and as a committee, you know, we would want to have within our policies that our buildings are going to be named after people with educational significance or inspiration. You know, we have former school committee members, former principals.
So, the one other difference to think about, which is, well, fine with me, but that wouldn't be a surprise at this point, is that the old policy said that any suggestions for naming basically is, I am made aware of as a superintendent, and then I make a recommendation for, to school committee about it. So, that, then that played big in some of our last few namings, is will I be making that recommendation, or will I, will I not be? So, I, because this new policy says the recommendations are made directly to the school committee chair. So, fine by me.
Right.
I just don't know how you feel about that procedurally.
And this, this was supposed to be naming facilities.
Just naming facilities, not?
It does say that on the long list that I made, provided.
Oh, just naming facilities. So, we take out new?
And then the FFA is, the memorials is added new policy. So, that's-
Okay.
Those are temporary memorials.
Well, that's, that's what I understood, but then I, I didn't know where the existing facilities part was. And I could see it when I read this policy, so, but if you take the new out of the title, then that, that works. It simplifies everything.
So, Chris, I think the ask of us, based on this discussion, is for you and Bevy to relook at what's been struck in the first paragraph here about the committee feels it's appropriate to name, excuse me, a name with educational significance or inspiration should be chosen. Just reconsider whether we need that.
Okay.
And also, related to that, on the naming existing facilities, the current policy on naming existing facilities, this second paragraph, I, I think this second paragraph has some content that we may want to bring into the wording of our new policy. Both of those, two comments I just made, both of those two places speak to the type of performance or contribution that someone has made that we would consider to name something for. So, I think what we're saying is, we'd like to get your and Bevy's consideration of adding some of that content into the new one.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. So, that, from the old naming existing facilities, the second paragraph, and then kind of combine it in with this first.
Correct. If, if you guys think that makes sense.
Yeah, it definitely makes sense.
Okay.
I think it's important. I'm sorry, you go.
Well, I was just going to say, I think it could, it would easily flow, just looking at this, if you put it in the, one, two, three, in the fourth, you know, after the, after the third paragraph.
When the opportunity to name, yeah, that's what I was thinking, right, put it right there.
Right, right, right there. Put it right before that one, or right after. It would really go-
Right in that paragraph, yeah.
Right there, yeah.
Yeah. I, I do personally think that's important, because the last three namings you've had, the people clearly met the criteria, but you may be facing one in which it isn't, and then you don't have, maybe the criteria that you've gone by that is meaningful to the community doesn't exactly apply. But I think it's-
It's good work. I just, I would love to see that paragraph put in here, and I'd like to see the, the name, a name with educational significance or inspiration back in. But other than that, I think it's good.
That's good.
Does that make sense? So, if you and Bevy could work, even with Amy or Debbie, talk about that, and then come up with a suggested wording?
Okay.
That'd be great. All right, I'll make you a deal, Chris, since you're doing all the heavy lifting here. If you want to read the short, new one, I'll read the long one.
All right. So, for memorials, File FFA, "The school committee recognizes that the death of a student, member of the staff, a prominent community member is deeply felt by the school community. As places designed primarily to support learning, school sites should not serve as the main venue for permanent memorials. Permanent memorials within the school shall be limited in form to perpetual awards or scholarships. Any permanent memorials in existence before the adoption of this policy can only be removed by a vote of the school committee." The source is MASC, August 2016.
Thoughts?
This is different. I think, I think it's, it's a hard one to talk about, but I, I do think that when, when we have a tragedy, the, the immediate emotion after the tragedy makes everyone want to memorialize as, as best we can. And I think this sort of slows that down a little bit and says, you know, they, it's actually, it says, not permanent memorials within, within the school. So, I'm kind of wondering, what does that mean? Because typically, we'll see them outside. So, the borough, for example, we have several memorials that will continue to exist for students there.
I think this is specifically for inside the buildings.
So, that was my question. School, it says school sites in the first paragraph, but then it says permanent memorials within the schools.
I think it needs to be better defined, that you're, whether you're discussing memorials within the school building or on school grounds. And, and if memorials on school grounds are allowed, then that, then you have to have some sort of guidelines for that. If this is all memorials on school property, inside or out, then it has to be more clearly delineated, I think.
So, I think that's, that's your-
And certainly, it wouldn't affect anything that is currently, currently exists on our school property.
No. So, I think that's what the committee's job is, to debate whether, whether you mean school grounds, whether you mean inside the school.
Right.
So that we clearly communicate that policy.
All right. So, this is the purpose of having a first reading and then a delay until the second reading, that we can think about it. I can tell you-
You may need a third reading. It's okay.
Yeah.
You know, some, we don't usually do a third, but you can perfectly, when something is, especially when something is new.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody, and you, you're lacking two committee members for the first reading.
And one of our policy subcommittee members, so.
Yeah. So, you might, you might actually want to debate it next time, and then do have a third reading. It's, it'll be fine.
It's a good suggestion, especially in light of the two absent committee members. Okay. So, we'll take this up again. We won't have to read it again. We'll be able to just discuss it. So, Janet, agenda item for the next meeting, discussion of, of this particular policy.
Okay.
All right, great. Thank you, Chris. Would you like me to read this last one, or would you like to?
So, yes.
So, this is a new policy recommended by MASC, File GBGE, Domestic Violence Leave Policy. It shall be the policy of the school district to permit an employee to take up to 15 days of domestic violence leave from work in any 12-month period. In order to be eligible for said leave, one, the employee or a family member of the employee must be a victim of abusive behavior. Two, the employee must be using the leave from work to seek or obtain medical attention, counseling, victim services, or legal assistance, secure housing, obtain a protective order from court, appear before a grand jury, meet with a district attorney or other law enforcement official, or attend child custody proceedings, or address other issues directly related to the abusive behavior against the employee or family member of the employee. And, three, the employee must not be the perpetrator of the abusive behavior against such employee's family member. The employer shall have the sole discretion to determine whether this leave shall be paid or unpaid. An employee seeking such leave shall exhaust all annual or vacation leave, personal leave, and sick leave available to the employee prior to requesting or taking domestic violence leave, unless the employer waives this requirement. Except in cases of imminent danger to the health or safety of an employee, advanced notice of domestic violence leave shall be required. If such imminent danger exists, the employee shall notify the employer within three workdays that the leave was taken. The notification may be communicated to the employer by the employee, a family member of the employee, or the employee's counselor, social worker, healthcare worker, member of the clergy, shelter worker, legal advocate, or other professional who has assisted the employee in addressing the effects of the abusive behavior. If an unscheduled absence occurs, an employer shall not take any negative action against the employee if the employee, within 30 days from the unauthorized absence, or within 30 days from the employee's last unauthorized absence, in the instance of consecutive days of unauthorized absences, provides any of the documentation found in one, number one to number seven below. An employer may require documentation that the employee or employee's family member has been a victim of abusive behavior and that the leave is consistent with clauses one to three as above referenced, provided, however, that an employer shall not require an employee to show evidence of an arrest, conviction, or other law enforcement documentation for such abusive behavior. The documentation shall be provided to the employer within a reasonable period after the employer requests it. An employee shall satisfy this documentation requirement by providing any one of the following documents to the employer. One, a protective order, order of equitable relief, or other documentation issued by a court of competent jurisdiction as a result of abusive behavior against the employee or employee's family member. Two, a document under the letterhead of the court, provider of, or public agency, which the employee attended for the purposes of acquiring assistance as it relates to the employee or family member. Three, a police report or statement of a victim or witness provided to police documenting the abusive behavior. Four, documentation that the perpetrator of the abusive behavior has admitted to sufficient facts to support a finding of guilt, or has been convicted of, or has been adjudicated a juvenile delinquent by reason of any offense constituting abusive behavior. Five, medical documentation of treatment as a result of the abusive behavior. Six, a sworn statement signed under the penalties of perjury provided by a counselor, social worker, healthcare worker, member of the clergy, shelter worker, legal advocate, or other professional who has assisted the employee in addressing the effects of the abusive behavior. Seven, a sworn statement signed under the penalties of perjury from the employee attesting that the employee has been a victim of, or is a family member of, a victim of abusive behavior. All information related to the employee's leave shall be kept confidential and shall not be disclosed, except to the extent that the disclosure is. One, requested or consented to in writing by the employee. Two, ordered to be released by a court of competent jurisdiction. Three, otherwise required by applicable federal or state law. Four, required in the course of an investigation authorized by law enforcement, including, but not limited to, an investigation by the attorney general. Or five, necessary to protect the safety of the employee or others employed at the workplace. The superintendent shall ensure that notice is provided to all employees in the next school year and beyond by appropriately amending the district's employee handbooks by whatever title they may be known, or by direct notice about the domestic violence law, and securing the employee's signature acknowledging receipt of the handbook slash notice. The superintendent shall be responsible for notifying all current employees unless they have been notified through the handbook of this policy in a manner that he or she deems appropriate. No employer shall coerce, interfere with, restrain, or deny the exercise of, or any attempt to exercise, any rights provided herein, or to make leave requested or taken contingent upon whether or not the victim maintains contact with the alleged abuser. No employer shall discharge or in any other manner discriminate against an employee for exercising the employee's rights under law. The taking of domestic violence leave shall not result in the loss of any employment benefit accrued prior to the date of such leave. Upon the employee's return from such leave, he or she shall be entitled to restoration to the employee's original job or to an equivalent position. Definitions of abuse, abusive behavior, domestic violence, employees, and family members may be found in the laws referenced below. Source, MASC, September 2016. Legal references, MGL 14952E, Section 10, Chapter 260 of the Acts of 2014. It says, "Note: The school committee should seek the advice of counsel, deliberate, and determine whether or not to change the following language in the first paragraph, as the school committee, in consultation with the superintendent, may choose to, one, make this type of leave paid or unpaid, and, two, make an employee exhaust other leave options or not. The employer shall have the sole discretion to determine whether this leave shall be paid or unpaid. An employee seeking such leave shall exhaust all annual or vacation leave, personal leave, and sick leave available to the employee prior to requesting or taking domestic violence leave, unless the employer waives this requirement. Additionally, the statute does not require that employers of less than 50 employees provide this leave." That does not apply to this.
It does not.
Well, that's a mouthful.
It is.
Thank you for reading that.
My pleasure.
I'll weigh in. It seems very complicated, and it is, but it's actually very similar to Family Medical Leave Act.
We just did that last year.
It's, it's very, well, it's a, it's a, it's a law.
Right.
It's a federal law. So, the process they described is very, very similar to that, where we, they do have to exhaust their available sick leave, whatever they have, and the rest is, is taken unpaid. So, even though it's a lot in here, and certainly in terms of the, the legal or public safety documentation of the situation, the process and the benefit to the employee is actually quite similar. So, at the end, I was like, okay, seems familiar.
You see where it fits in.
It does. It's very, very consistent.
Other thoughts?
Did we need, do we need to consult Dan Brown about that second paragraph in the policy?
I think it's always wise.
Or is it, I mean, I do think it's always wise to get his counsel. I do think, as you said, it's consistent with our policy and the Family and Medical Leave Act, but it's, you know.
It might also be in the benefit of the, us as the employer, to make it consistent with what we currently do, so that people don't get confused by, well, if it's this reason, I need some time, or versus this reason, and I get that, or one less day, or more and more day. I think, I think that that, I, I actually think it's good to leave some discretion in there.
I, I would agree with that.
And the exhaustion of the current benefited days is always a good idea, from an HR standpoint.
So, Debbie, would you mind taking that to do, to talk to Dan and get his perspective on that point, but also just this new policy in general?
Mm-hmm. We'll do.
I'm sure other committees are dealing with this and having to read the same thing.
Right.
The poor public. Yeah, I mean, my reaction to this was, as I read it and then just reread it out loud, was, it seems like a lot of gobbledygook, I suppose, and a lot of policy, and I couldn't help but hearken back to the beginning of the meeting when Glenn Kuchar talked about how regulated Massachusetts education is.
Oh, my goodness.
But, my quick but, as I was, you know, thinking about this, is, you know, we know that the superintendent has to deal with issues from time to time.
Right.
We're fortunate in Foxborough not to have had many of them, but there are issues that occur. And in those times, I think the more that is spelled out, the easier it is for the superintendent.
Great.
And less gray area, so.
Great.
My only question to Chris, and I, I meant to look this up before I left the office, but I didn't, I forgot. It says, when you look at the, the list of the policies that they recommend you take a look at, it says, "Domestic Violence Leave, Updated Language, and Changed Code from GCCC." So, I wondered, was there a policy similar to this before that looked a little bit similar? What was GCCC? Because, you know, everyone says, you know, how do you uphold your policies? Well, the policy manual is this thick. So, when you talk, you wonder why nobody wants to go to the job. Don't listen, Amy. But there is a lot. So, I was kind of wondering, what's the old GCC? So, I was trying to hand-signal Janet, you know, any idea what this, this was? So, I just don't know what is in there, similar to the last one we talked about. What, did that one have the same name, and what, what did it say before, and what are the changes, and what are we giving up? Or maybe it was something completely different, but I, it doesn't seem like it's totally new to me when I look at this list, yet we're talking about it as if the whole thing's brand-new. So, I just meant to double-check my-
When they made changes, I mean, this is just going back to the Family and Medical Leave Act. When they made changes in that, we, we had a whole, remember, we swapped in the entire, an entire new policy to replace it, to reflect current law.
Into contracts, but that's, that's not policy-driven, it's law-driven.
Right.
So, that was easy to just, you know, take out the new language and put it right into our, into all of our contracts, actually, for, for, you know, parental leave.
Parentally, thank you.
Not maternity leave, it's parental.
Parentally.
So, I just don't know. That was my question, is, what did that mean? And, you know, working on a speed for tomorrow, and I forgot. So.
Should I get that tomorrow?
Yeah, I don't, I don't get service in here. I have it on my phone, the policy manual.
I, I knew I'd get service over here, because I'm too far away from that thing over there, but.
I don't get service.
I don't think we have to go through that tonight. I think the main thing is, you know, on this particular one, when we come back at the next meeting, we want to hear the response from Dan Brown.
Sure.
And we want to see what GCCC said.
Said.
So, we'll have-
We could actually send that out to you. Janet can send you that via email if you want, the old one.
Sure.
That sounds good.
So, you can take a look at it.
But I suspect since, again, since Bevy and Marilyn aren't here tonight, we're probably going to have to go back to each of these.
Revisit some of this.
At least we won't have to read them, but we'll, we'll want to discuss them. All right. So, the next several meetings, we will have some policy time. Chris, was there anything else you wanted us to cover under these four policies?
No, I forgot everything tonight.
We're all right. We're all right. Anybody else have anything on this topic? All right, so they are read into record, and we will discuss at the next meeting. Okay, shifting gears to acceptance of donations.
Well, let's go to something happy. Again, I think this is definitely filed under, we're so lucky to be in this community who's so supportive and, you know, in every way. So the first donation asking to accept is a total of $3,250 from the Foxborough Diamond Club Incorporated, and they are the ones that support any, I don't want to call them extra coaches, I'll call them supplemental coaches for the benefit of our baseball team. And so that is for, you know, the assistant coaches that they work with the, with the athletic director and the coaches, say it'd be nice. These are definitely nice and need to haves, I think. So that's from the treasure of the Foxborough Diamond Club.
And just as a point of discussion before we accept or not accept declined this donation, I know you and Rich Cormier, the athletic director, have done a lot of work to standardize booster procedures. And I believe one of the things you have discussed is the ability to fund some of these additional coaches?
Which is welcomed. So we just had a meeting, actually, not even two weeks ago, with the boosters, and, which we are now doing annually, and we have a booster brochure, booster guideline brochure to help boosters. So they are independent organizations, but most people go into, you know, being active in a booster club because they love the sport and their children play it. And so we found it helpful several years ago when Caitlin Brown was the athletic director that we created this booster, booster club guideline pamphlet. And Bill and I update it every year, and it's been really helpful for them to understand their nonprofit status and what can they do, what should they do, what can they not do. So that's helpful. So one of the things they can do is provide supplemental coaches for any sport if they think it'd be an added benefit. So it's no different from providing extra equipment. They bought a special pitching machine, I think, a few years ago, so, and that's just that sport. The only difference is, in the, in the old days, I can't say the good old days, because it wasn't good. So in the old days, there was a lot of informal agreements where cash was handed over to extra supplemental coaches that we didn't know about. And we're very serious about our responsibility for our kids and the liability that results. So Bill and I instituted a couple of years ago that is part of the booster guidelines that, that's done, you can't do that anymore. So we created a tiered system depending on the, I guess, the time commitment that a particular extra coaching position would, in the athletic director's professional opinion, so that would it be tier one, tier two, tier three, different levels of stipends. So if the booster club, any booster club has interest in providing extra coaches, they work with the A.D. to say this is what we like and why. If the A.D. agrees, they recommend it to us. And the Diamond Club, as they've done here, any booster then gives, the amount of the stipend is set by the athletic director. That never used to happen before. There used to be all kinds of extra, could be anywhere from $200 to $1,200. I mean, I think the first year we met with boosters, we came away kind of shocked at what went on informally. So the athletic director determines the stipend, and then the, whatever the booster club is, gives us the money, and we go through our normal hiring procedures where we make sure that that coach is, has a query, the coach is fingerprint, you know, anything that has to happen for the other coaches happens, and they are then appointed by the superintendent. So that means that we have officially designated that person as a responsible employee by the district for the supervision of those children. So that also prevents what went on for many decades as the handoff. So you've agreed to coach a sport, you can't make it a particular month, and you just say to me, hey, you're my friend, and you sort of get this sport, will you oversee my practices for the next two weeks and I'll give you all some money? You know, that can't happen. There's no handoff of responsibility either in education in any way, shape, or form. So I think that's really helped us to, it's helped us communicate better, it's helped us understand what we're all doing to support our athletic program, which is unbelievable. It's tremendous how much support we get. And I think it made me aware and appreciate more of what the boosters do, because all of that happened without anybody really knowing about it until you, which happened to me, run into somebody and say, oh, I'm one of your coaches, and I'm thinking, I never heard of your name, you don't look familiar to me, I better get to the bottom of this. And I just simply said, well, thank you. But then went right to the high school the next day and said, who is this person I never heard of? So I think it's going to help us protect children, it certainly will give them greater benefit in the athletic team, so it's a win-win, win-win-win, and that's, that's how it works. So that's why they're donating this money, so that we can then turn around and pay them from our payroll. So then we have a record of the payroll and the payments made, which is really important for accountability.
Thank you for reviewing that.
It's a good explanation.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to accept?
Yes. I'll move to accept the two donations from the Foxborough.
Let's do one at a time.
One at a time?
Yeah.
I'll move to accept the first donation from the Foxborough Diamond Club in the amount of $1,250.
I'm sorry, Tina, let's do both. I thought you were doing the Jerry Roy one.
No, I was just doing both checks.
She's doing the individual.
I'm sorry.
I gave one amount, and she's dividing it up because she thought that's what she did.
I felt like there were two checks, so that's what I did.
Let's do the one amount.
Okay.
Sorry.
I move to accept the donation from the Foxborough Diamond Club in the amount of $3,250 total for two assistant baseball coaches.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Thank you, Tina. Three, zero.
Thank you, and thank you to the Diamond Club.
Thank you, Jeff Terryault and the Foxborough Diamond Club.
They do some amazing things. They do. All right, the second donation is to the Jerry Roy Scholarship Fund, and maybe we should just take a minute for a moment of silence for Jerry. Jerry was, if you're watching at home, Jerry was a longstanding decades department head for visual arts here in Foxborough and made an impact on so many lives, and he passed away unexpectedly recently. Thank you. That was certainly some summer news that, you know, it really hit everybody quite hard. And, you know, so condolences to his family, and he has three children, and it's been a lot. So we, just as a one moment of realizing his impact in a very short period of time, we have collected $14,018 from various donors for the Gerald Roy Scholarship.
Wait, how much did you say it was?
$14,018.
So it's an update from what we were given.
Yeah, we're still receiving.
It's probably even more now. I mean, since this was put in my binder, I'm sure it is more.
So the dollar amount, Debbie, that we want to accept tonight, is it the $14,000 or is it the documented $12,958?
Well, I didn't, I didn't know I had a different amount from you, I'm sorry.
That's right.
So I have the one Janet put in today.
All right.
So.
That's how up to date Janet is, she's already got a new one for us.
Bill already did it, and I didn't give him one. I didn't see the early one, so I didn't realize you had a different one. But I would say to, to accept the $14,018 that you have today.
Yep.
There'll be more to come.
That's a, that's quite a nice sum in memory of Jerry, so quickly, right?
Right, it was just less than, less than a month ago. I was on vacation when he passed away, so I'm going to say it was the first week of August, around then.
Do you want a motion? I will make a motion to accept the Gerald Roy Scholarship donations in the amount of $14,018.
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous with gratitude and condolences to the Roy family, and thank you, Mrs. Spinelli, for having us take a moment for him.
First, before we move on, Mrs. D. also passed away this summer. Janet, um.
Oh, Damiani, one of our substitute teachers.
Yeah, since, she was another one who was just, she was wonderful to my boys while they were in elementary school, middle school, and just a lovely lady, and just since we are discussing untimely passings, hers was as well, and she will be missed.
Okay, the Bye County Collaborative, otherwise known as Byco Quarterly Update.
So this is their June 2017 update. They continue to have strong programs. I'd say the highlights, looking at the time, I'll say they have moved their therapeutic middle and high school programs to Walpole. So they've been actively looking for new space and have had actually a new space committee going on for about a year for Byco. Their Life Roles Transition Center program is moved to Walpole as well, but a different address, and they'll be sharing space with the Tech Collaborative, and they'll have a lot more facilities there for students who need that type of therapy. They have increased their efforts on family engagement, tried to get creative with some of the ways they engage families in there to learn more about their academic programs in Byco. And they have a new strategic plan, I should have started with that, which I served on their Strategic Planning Subcommittee, and that's the first time I think they've ever had a strategic plan. So they, they definitely have more of a vision for where they want to grow in the future.
Great. Anything, Debbie, that we need to think about with Byco in terms of your transition or not at this time?
Well, the superintendents of the Board of Directors, so you will have to appoint the next member of the Board of Directors, yes. But I will serve through the fall.
Okay.
As a transition.
All right. And unless there's anything else on that, thank you for that update, but that's probably a segue to our next topic.
Well, it is, because now you have a choice. So PCC, Contemporary, Project Contemporary Competitiveness is a summer program that we belong to. I will say this, I think we're going to give our membership in this program one more year, see if we enroll students next summer. I think that the districts that send a lot of kids to PCC, now that we belong for about two years, and I go to the board meetings and I've had a chance to learn, typically, enrollment is down at the summer program anyway, and part of that is declining enrollment in Massachusetts, because everywhere has trickle-down enrollment like we do. But the other thing is, I think when PCC started 50 years ago, it, with just a few districts, it became in those districts a legacy program. So if you lived in certain communities, that's what you sent your kids to in the summer. I think what's happened in 50 years is that there's so much more kids can enjoy now. There's sports camps, there's arts camps, there's music, we run music camp, which is quite rigorously enrolled, and, or vigorously enrolled. So there's so many other opportunities, and I think the market for this type of program is less. What we found is that our kids who do want to go, the gap is the arts, it's theater, it's acting, and we don't run summer programs for that. But do we see kids going there for other reasons? Not really. So I've been upfront with the Board of Directors that we'll give it one more year, and then if, if we don't see that Foxborough kids are really, you know, aiming for that, then it, to me, and this will be a decision you'll make with Amy, it doesn't make sense for us to continue our membership, but I think it deserves one more year to try. But we did a pretty aggressive recruiting last year in help parent programs, and started right at the beginning of the year with orientation and open houses at schools through the guidance department. So I thought if we ever were going to get people interested, it would have been last year, because we started early, and it didn't happen, so.
Are they feeling a sense of urgency? Are there enough other districts that are?
They are. What seems to be happening, they have new leadership now, so the person who's been running it is retiring, and another person's taking it over that's known to us, a member of the board, actually. So I think they're going to try new methods of recruiting or new, something new. I mean, I think it's also, it's a, it's a sleepaway program. So your children are gone during the week, and they're only home on weekends for six weeks. That's long for some families.
That's the problem.
That's part of it.
Just one parent's reaction.
It is part of it.
I remember when you first brought this program to us, and for those who don't know about it, who, you know, maybe listening to the meeting or watching the meeting, it is what you said, a sleepaway program for a lot of different subject areas that look like really great enrichment opportunities for kids.
Wonderful.
But for six weeks.
Right.
And I remember being very interested as one parent, but, but the time duration was just too much of the summer. You know, if you have, in our case, kids involved in summer sports or things like that, it just was.
Exactly.
So I don't, I just didn't know, as a member of the Board of Directors, if you have the opportunity to bring that back as feedback.
Well, we've talked about it endlessly. I think, I think that the next year will be telling with new leadership. Can they get out of the mold that they've had?
They made some program design changes.
They definitely need some program design changes, because 50 years ago, without any other opportunities, people may be used to going to summer camps.
Yeah.
But summer camps typically are two weeks or maybe three weeks. So this idea of six weeks is quite long. What, what seems to be happening is they do have a lot of international students now coming from, from two different, one group comes from China and the other from Scandinavia, one of the Scandinavian countries, I'm trying to remember what it is. So I think that's how they're making up their enrollment differences, but in terms of Massachusetts kids, is, it is declining every year. So I think they've got to package some options together, and so far, they've stuck with their same model. But anyway, we'll, we'll see. Because I think the other communities don't see the need necessarily for changes, more the new member communities that are saying, these are all factors and these are issues. The legacy communities where their parents and their grandparents now all went there, it's just what people do. So I just don't know if they can survive on that. So it's been certainly some interesting conversations, but I think if, if it's going to be the same model, then Foxborough has some thinking to do about whether this is, that we have a real market for that.
So we were going to take up a school committee appointment to this, as we do every year. What are your thoughts?
I think you could go either way. I think you could appoint me for the next four months and then do another appointment, or I think you could appoint Amy tonight. I don't think it, I think you, I think it's up to you.
My inclination with your background there and how much Amy has on her plate would be to ask you to keep doing it for four months, but I don't know how the rest of the committee present feels.
I think they're two great options, but I tend to agree with you. Keep it going.
You all right with that, Chris?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I would probably prefer Dr. Burrows because it's a summer program, and she'll be the superintendent at that time, but I also understand that.
I'll drag her to a transition meeting.
That she's, with the transition, it's going to be a lot anyway, so.
Amy, do you have an opinion whether you want to start now, or?
I actually happen to agree with you and Tina. I think that because there's been so many conversations, and Debbie has kept to me abreast of all of these conversations at the same time, because we've talked a lot about it, too, because I share the same experience that you do with my own children in sports. There's not any way that my children could ever participate in something like this because of the length of it and because of the sports they're involved in. And there have been such robust conversations that she shared with me. I think it's really important for her to be there, because if we are going to make a shift or change in the future, what she brings to the table there is really important.
Want a motion?
Sure. I will move, I will make a motion that we approve Mrs. Debbie Spinelli as the school committee appointment to the Project Contemporary Competitiveness Board of Directors for the 2017-2018 school year.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Three, nothing.
Thank you.
Three, zero.
Just a thought, I just wrote down the list. In the interest of making sure we do all this, I'm going to list all the different boards and things that I'm appointed to, that you're going to have to just make a switch, you can do them all at once.
All of them, yep.
Because there are, there are several.
In December.
Okay, we are on to other matters.
Oh, my, how many do we have? I wanted you, the first thing I want to make sure we say, well, hopefully people are still watching, is, you know, in, in June, there was a recognition of retirees, it's one of my favorite meetings, and as we experienced two years ago, we had two late retirements, literally the last day of school and two days before the last day of school, and they're both people who had been at Max for a while and just really loved what they do, and surprised us with it. And it, in retrospect, it is their personality to sort of just get their stuff done at the end and not want to make too big of a deal of themselves, and probably people wouldn't have wanted to come to that meeting anyway, but their career deserves mentioning. So one was Greg McManus, the wellness teacher at the Borough School, longstanding. So his was Tuesday of the last week of school, and surprised me. And then on the very last day of school, which is Thursday of that week, the famous and infamous Ellie Petrovic, longstanding wellness teacher at the high school, whom my children obviously had, and just a bundle of energy, nobody can keep up with her still. And so they've both, they both retired, and unexpectedly, I mean, everybody knew eventually they would, but they were still going, going strong, and they are still going strong. So I would just want to acknowledge their years of service, and even though their retirements were announced, since you acknowledged, they won't come to the meeting, so I don't, you know, for Janet's record-keeping, you know, sometimes if they retire in August and September, you include them next June, but I think if we just acknowledge them today, it's, it's fine, and they're great, so I wish them very well in their retirements.
Well, congratulations to Greg and Ellie, and thank you for their service, and I'm sure we'll be sending them and probably have already our traditional gift of retirement.
Yes, oh, yes. Traditional gifts are up and operating. And the second most important thing I want to mention is that we, as of Friday, we have a new MECO director. And I'd like Amy to talk a little bit about her, name is Yessenia Castro, and I, we share And we share the MECO director with Walpole, so this has been weeks of work. Amy and Jean Kenny, the Assistant Superintendent at Walpole, did the humans' work of recruiting, searching, interviewing, screening. And then Link Lynch, Dr. Lynch from Walpole, and I interviewed her. And I can't, I can't say enough about how excited I am to see what she brings for our Boston students, and the richness she'll bring to that program. And I was just struck by her real personal touch that she's going to have, and I think it's just another example of, we're just attracting the best people. I just can't say enough about her. So why don't you talk a little bit about the process and her?
Sure. So we had a great amount of applicants, and then with Dr. Kenny and Walpole, we had a team of administrators and parents included, from both Walpole and Foxborough, MECO parents, and went through two full rounds of interviews. And Yessenia comes to us with, she has nine years' experience of being a former MECO director. She also comes to us with other educational experiences, but really working with students and student programming and access for students. She is, just her personality, you are just, you just gravitate to her right away. So I know that our students will as well. She has a bachelor's and a master's degree in social work from Wheelock College, and then additional educational leadership experience on top of that. So she will be serving our students from Walpole and here in Foxborough, and she'll join us tomorrow morning for our opening of school, so we'll have the opportunity to introduce her to everyone.
But her transition will take a little longer. She's currently working, actually, in the Brookline Public Schools as an administrator, overseeing student assessment data and all kinds of student data, so.
When will she come on board?
Well, that's going to be negotiated with us in Brookline. So we're not sure of the exact start date, but we're going to, we're going to do some trading of time to allow a transition. So very, very pleased about that.
That's great.
So, thank you. I know it was a lot of work this summer, as everything is, but that, that was a really key position for us.
I know that's something you've had your eye on for a while, so that's great.
Yes. We talked about that. I shouldn't say um so many times. Erin mentioned the Administrative Retreat, which we held last Tuesday up at Gillette Stadium. We, our whole, our big team is actually, which includes Tony, and Carl, and Erin, and our Food Service Director, but for the majority of the day, it's the, it's the academic leaders, if you will, and administrators, which is about 30 to 31, and then with everybody else, it's about 35 or 36 people. And we had a great day, we did a lot, we get a lot done on that day, but we also have fun and do some team-building things. But we got, we got an awful lot done, such as things that would be interested of the committee. So we brainstormed the future tech plan, we're building that from the ground up, if you will, and not just saying, let's just get a team and create a plan. We started by asking the, our leaders to just brainstorm the themes that they think should be in the next tech plan. And then on to say, what are some other things that we should consider, and what are you most afraid of with technology, and what things we, so I think that was helpful. And I'm pointing to Amy, because it won't be my job to develop the next tech plan, but it will be Amy's. And I thought that was, we got a really, a lot of useful information out of that that will help us. We also took the strategic plan that you just approved in July, and we had people parse through it and say, we called it, where are you going to place your bets? What we really said was, what part of this are you going to own responsibility for? Whether you're a building principal, what is your school going to own? If you're a department head, if you're a curriculum director, what are the pieces that you're going to take for your own, and how, and what will that actually look like? So we spent significant time on the strategic plan, and this is the same process we followed three years ago, and we had a new plan then, so that we don't just have a plan, and then say, oh, we better, you know, we better hope for the best, and then update you. We start right from the first month that you approve it, and say, you know, now, let's all look at it. How are we all going to contribute to the success, successful completion of this plan in three years? And what are you going to do in the next year? So we started right away, just taking it apart, and having everybody document the pieces that they're going to own. So we're off to a good start with that.
Great.
New teacher orientation. Amy and her team developed a great new, two-day new teacher orientation last week. So I don't know if you wanted to speak to some of the highlights of that?
Just, I think that every year, we continue to say a lot of the same things, the people that we're hiring, because we know it's all in who you hire. And you can see that with the caliber of the new candidates that are coming to us with different experiences, so it's exciting to get to know them a little bit better, and you have that opportunity through new teacher orientation. And then also, the Educational Assistant Orientation that took place last week as well.
That was our first ever. So I was telling Chris a little bit before the meeting, so we have 16 new teachers, and I'd say a mix of new teachers, or new-ish teachers, and veteran teachers from other districts, who are looking to come to a district with more strength and more of a professional community they want.
Out of state, coming from out of state.
And a couple from out of state, and so...
That's right, there's one living in one of the hotels.
Yes, oh yes.
She was talking about, she was talking about breakfast every morning at the local hotel that she's in, till she finds where she's going to live.
But we have some unbelievable, you know, new teachers. And the Ed Assistants, when we did negotiations with them a little over a year ago, when we concluded that a year ago, June, one of the things they asked for was their own orientation. We do it for teachers, and it would much help them acclimate to the, to a new role, rather than just showing up for school and have somebody saying, well, go here and go with this student, or help them out. So they had actually brainstormed the topics that they wanted, and we had three Ed Assistants that came in that day to help me out with that. And also, Mark Crean, I want to thank Mark Crean, Assistant Principal at the Middle School, who did the section on discipline expectations, how discipline is handled, how restraints are handled. And Mike Stanton, who did all of the piece on confidentiality and professionalism in the workplace. We even talked about, you know, how to dress. I mean, it was really very helpful. We got to actually more topics than we thought. So that was our first annual, and I do think that was a really good addition to what we do, to help people get off. And then PD is happening, starting tomorrow, and Amy's responsible for that, and it's pretty, did we put that into other matters?
I don't, I don't think so. Usually, you do get in the program, and it's pretty amazing, but I didn't see it this time.
Oh my.
We're going to see it, Tina and I will see it tomorrow.
See it tomorrow.
Okay, we'll send it to you. So there's all kinds of stuff going on. All kinds of.
In a nutshell, if you will, we're tomorrow's opening day in building-based staff meetings, and then Wednesday and Thursday. On one of the two days, all of our teachers will be in very content-specific, curriculum-driven professional development, also connecting back to student engagement and the instructional rounds you've heard a lot about, and engaging strategies within their content. On the opposite day, that's not, is their content-curriculum focus, it's to bring back choice within the current initiatives that we have taking place within the district, whether it's understanding by design with curriculum development, whether it's technology with the CMA model and integrating technology in curriculum with the technology standards, looking at that, as well as teams and new collaborative tools that are available to us through Office 365. It's now functionality is some of the things that we've seen in something like Edmodo, that really is marrying it nicely. So when we've talked about these different platforms, and how we're starting to see that does what Edmodo does, within the teams, within Office 365. So teachers have the choice of, do I want to go to this session or this one, depending on what their, their background, their level of interest is, but it's all within the initiatives that we have taking place. English language learners, teachers are required for their certification to have 15 hours in meeting the needs of ELL students, also meeting the diverse needs of students. So we have sessions on topics such as students who have school phobia, you know, and are really, school avoidance, I should say, not wanting to come to school. And so there's sessions that have to do with that, where more of some of our guidance counselors and nurses are working within those sessions, mindfulness, really talking about what it takes for the mind to be ready, and for students to be ready for learning. There's so many different sessions that they have to choose from, and for instance, the ELL one is, it's a hybrid, where it's 15 hours, it's five hours, and then five hours online, another five hours on a PD day. So really trying to meet the needs of what teachers have for certification, but at the same time, when we look at what the outcomes were with our Social Emotional Learning Program Review, and what came out of that, and anxiety, and the brain fit, and different aspects that can meet those needs. So there's a lot going on in the next three days.
Wow.
Excellent.
Chris, what was your reaction when you hear about these PD days? Do you guys do anything like this?
No, no, we don't. We have one day, and it's mostly like the procedures of the school.
Yeah.
And then we set up our classroom the second half, so we don't have anything like this. I did just take a class on different PD things at Bridgewater this summer, I learned all these new strategies that I don't think I'll ever see in my school, but it's pretty cool.
You had to do it on your own.
Well, yeah, there was just different strategy in the, for the CAGs of different strategies of running your own PD.
Yeah.
And it seems like you guys have a lot of it with the choices and all that.
Mm-hmm. It's good to have, just like kids, if you have some choice, not all choice, but if you have some choice, some part of your school day, or your school, you know, your curriculum, it's a motivator. It's, it's great. And so we do the same, it's actually, you know, no different for adults, we like choice, too. And there's different needs I might have for my certification, that you may have already taken care of, and you and I haven't, so we're going to go. But we, I think that those three days professionally together do contribute in building the culture and the team. And after those three days, we're more than ready for the kids to come on Tuesday. So it's not a quick, here we are, they're coming tomorrow, I'm behind already, because that's, I know sometimes the way I used to feel in my teaching career. So we like our three days, and we like that front-loading, and we really feel it sets a foundation for our professional culture.
Yep, you guys have a history doing a great job with a very rich program. I'm sure it'll be awesome again.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah.
And also having some of our teachers that have been using, like Karen Borges and Alyssa Matronik, who you've heard, they're running a session on the teams and what they're doing in their classroom. So when you've got it coming from your colleagues, that they've tried and true, that right there speaks the loudest.
It sure does.
Fantastic.
Which reminds me, we have to get a little mini-workshop together. Element, see, we're very hands-on, so I think Amy and I still have an assignment to prep for, for the PD days, don't we?
Yes.
Okay.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, thank you. Tomorrow afternoon's filling up fast.
I guess. Anything else, Debbie, on this?
No, I just want to thank everybody for everything for this whole summer. I think we're off to another smooth start. I'd be surprised if it wasn't yet another very smooth start, because we do believe in preparation.
That's great.
So thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Tina?
Couple things. We've had a bunch of meetings on the Borough School Project with the School Building Committee, and with the Architect Castle Booz. I'm going to let Mr. Youkina take over that part, but we've got another meeting coming up next Wednesday, so, and then in anticipation of a big filing at the MSBA on September 22nd, is that right? But I'm going to let Bill give you the details on this.
Yeah, as Tina said, basically, the, we've been trying to stay to that short window, schedule-wise, to keep ourselves moving as quickly as we possibly can. And even with that, we know it's, you know, many-year process type of thing. So basically, Castle Booz has been trying to check off each one of the issues. They did a two-day, well, day and a half session, just on the educational requirements of that building, and the second day included parents as well, which I thought was actually very interesting, because in the end, one of the outcomes was that, with everybody's help, a use of the building, a reuse of the building, let's say, was designed out, and two different groups, the whole thing broke into two different groups, and the basic requirements came out the same from both groups. It spoke to, obviously, a lot of the things that the MSBA expects to be in a building, but also a lot of things that we felt are necessary for that building as a pre-K center as well, to be as good as it can be. So as Tina said, basically, we have to march all this documentation to the point of being able to do a submission for their, the 22nd, September 22nd, and that gave us very little time, but it has been going very well so far. I will say, I'm extremely pleased that we did hire Castle Booz. Again, one of the big advantages is a local firm, so when we do have meetings, we can go to their offices, or they can be at ours, it's, you know, pretty easy and seamless that way. They have a great group of consultants right now. You know, we've been able to hear from the mechanical engineers, the...
They were impressive one day.
All of them basically outlining the issues that they see within the existing structure, and, you know, how we're going to overcome those issues. So it was really, really good to see. You're going to see, basically, three options that have been laid out as far as how to renovate the building itself. But one of the other things that we also have to do with the MSBA process is to show them what the cost of a new structure would be, and what the issues and limitations are of putting a new structure on that site. So again, they're working on that as well. And also, one of the other, the third component to that is if you just were to do maintenance, meaning replace windows, fix roofs, that type of stuff. The ironic thing is, that does, as we've talked in the past, trigger all your requirements to meet all the accessibility requirements and things of that nature, and it's going to be a very large number for something that you get virtually no additional educational value out of, other than a sounder building. And so I think that's, those three components will be in this filing, and, you know, if we hit the 22nd, then we're still on our schedule, and we'll continue to march forward.
And what would the next step be after the filing?
After that filing, and the MSBA agrees and understands, you then have to hone in on the single option you want to move forward with, and then KBA has to take that through an entire, you know, schematic design and construction design concept. So that basically, you could submit that, again, for a funding level, which would come out, actually, in the spring, a request for a funding level.
Great. Great. Thank you for attending those meetings. Thank you for leading those meetings.
And I will have my homework done, like, hopefully by Monday this week. I have the educational program planned, too. Right? I just remembered, I was like, oh, I can just put a big square around that one. It's busy. It's a busy time.
Anything else, Tina?
Well, I did want to bring up, Vera has a very good article in last week's Foxborough Reporter about last week's Board of Selectmen meeting. They took up the issue of charter school, pushing the state on charter school tuitions for full, 100% reimbursement. And I'm not really sure how to phrase it, but I feel like our committee should be supporting the Board of Selectmen in this endeavor, in this push. I'm not sure how we want to do that as a committee, but certainly, I support it. It's in line with our interests to receive 100% reimbursement. So I just thought I would bring it to the table, and see what you guys think about it.
I, I, you and I talked about this. I'm glad that you thought about this, and it makes a lot of sense to me. Should we reach out to the Selectmen?
I was thinking, maybe that would be the best thing, if you talked to Dave Feldman, and saw how we could best support them, whether it be signing on to their drafting a home rule petition, asking the state to reimburse Foxborough 100% of its charter school, if they need us to sign on as further backup, or what. I'm not really sure what the best way is that we support them in this. Certainly, that does have to come from the Board of Selectmen, and I really appreciate their efforts in this area, but...
Me, too.
As a school committee, I mean, we support this effort, I mean, I support this, I can't speak for the whole committee, but I would think...
I also noticed in that article, the number, we're oversubscribed, we don't have that many kids there, where they, they say to the town, we're going to have so many kids from Foxborough, and that's the assessment they get, like, now? And we don't, we're 20, at least 20 kids away from that number, so that...
I think even more.
More.
I think, and this is, this is a point that, you know, our finance director for the town, Randy, has mentioned, been mentioning for the last number of years, is that their initial assessment is always considerably higher, which, in the end, yes, we get a credit back to the town, but it's, they're effectively requiring the town to put up front the money to get that credit way back in the spring.
And getting the interest on it.
Yeah.
So we had 105 kids there this year.
Right.
We can't possibly have 140 now, two months later.
148, yeah.
148? Well, I'll be even more irritated. I mean, it doesn't make any sense. I mean, it doesn't make any sense, so I, it seems to me, and I know I don't know enough, because they can just throw out a number and say, we think we're going to get so many kids, give us the money, and then, oop, she only had a hundred and five, I'll give you back the difference. But that's a lot of money, fifteen thousand per kid-ish, ish. So I don't understand how that, how that's, there's something wrong with the, with the whole law. Not, I'm not, not the charter school, I know Mark and I go along great, but there's something wrong with how the regulations are written that allow that, that level of discrepancy that basically holds our money.
The numbers are the numbers. I don't, you know.
They get to project.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I think I've probably said enough for tonight, but, on that, but I think that's-
So-
I'll reach out to Dave.
And then maybe we can discuss it at our meeting in September, or?
Yep, that'd be great.
Excellent, thank you.
So Janet, let's take that as another agenda, planned item.
Next meeting.
Charter school discussion.
The only other thing I had to mention was, just going back to the Jack Martinelli Field dedication, our wonderful friends at Foxborough Cable Access were there videotaping the entire ceremony, so if you were not fortunate enough to be there-
Watch it.
They're going to edit it, and I'm sure it will be up on their website and available for people to watch at their leisure. And it is worth watching, I mean, honestly, the beautiful things his daughter had to say, and Coach himself spoke at the end, and it was really beginning to end just a fantastic program, so. And thank you to Cable for taping.
Great.
I was going to mention Vera. Is that okay?
Yeah, please.
All right, I do have one more thing. Vera, is this your last official school committee meeting or last?
This is my last official school committee.
Ah. So it's probably unusual for a superintendent to say, I'll really miss you, my local reporter person, but I really will, Vera, I think you've always been professional, you write your stories well, I enjoy reading them, I love your style, but most importantly, I've always appreciated your attention to detail, getting the facts right, getting the quotes right. And I lost, you know, that, that I used to be a little bit more parentally, can you tell me anything? I realized the last time I talked to you, I've completely lost that. It's like I trust whatever I actually said is what is actually going to be reported, and that you will do your due diligence to get the facts. So I really wish you well in your new assignment out in Western Massachusetts, but we really miss you here in Foxborough, and I will in particular, and I wanted to say that to you, that I wish you well, and keep in touch.
Thank you.
Well said.
Absolutely.
Vera, thanks for the coverage, we appreciate your support.
Thank you.
And we'll find a way to feed the Foxborough Cable Feed out West for you, so you can still spend every other Monday night with us. Wouldn't that be fun?
I think it's online.
My mom likes it on YouTube, so you can catch us on YouTube.
I can watch it on YouTube.
Oh, thank you, Vera.
I wish you well.
Tina, you all set?
I am all set.
Amy?
All set.
Chris?
Just hope everyone has the best school year ever, and be careful driving now with school, with school kids back today and most back next week, and be careful walking. No texting and driving, no texting and walking.
Hmm, that is great advice.
First day of school, September 5th, Tuesday after Labor Day.
So parents, you have a week to get, you know, last minute back-to-school shopping together and send your kids back happy, healthy, and excited, and with a smile on their face on Tuesday.
Bill, anything?
Just real quick, we hired CME architects to finalize and pull the plans together for the concession stand on the turf field. It's been a long time in coming, but I think obviously without the support of the track and the concession, and the bleachers, which we were hoping to kind of package together, we're going to go ahead and do this on our own at this point. We do, as you know, have about two hundred and fifty thousand, I think, in funding available to do the project. So they, they're very reputable firm, they, I think will do a good job for us, and we'll be bringing plans to you shortly that show the facilities, there'll be bathrooms, storage, and concession stand, and ticket booths, all combined into one facility.
That'll be exciting, yep. Appreciate you bringing that up, because I know we've talked about that for a long time, so thanks for progressing on that. Good, anything else, Bill?
Nope, that's it.
Janet?
All set, thank you.
Joseph?
So Mr. Ucknack, I was going to ask, so you were saying for the, you know, we've got an architect for the concessions and bathrooms, like, would they be coming to the school committee to present next meeting or the meeting after?
They probably won't present, I probably will present what we come up with for a design that they'll award.
When will that be, the next meeting?
They basically, I would say it would be in September, could be the second meeting in September.
When will the project start, before the fall, over, or the early spring?
It really will depend on the scope of the project itself, how big, you know, the different issues are that we face. They're going through all of the code requirements and seeing if we have any problems with anything that we need to get to.
Sure. Joe, you ask tougher questions than we do.
Oh.
That's good, that's good, keep Mr. Ucknack on his toes. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All those in favor? Good night, everybody.